Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
Good evening, everybody, Burbank community, council members, city staff, city attorney, city clerk. I'd like to welcome everybody to an online closed session meeting of the Burbank City Council today, Tuesday, June 22, 2021. The public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting in lieu of in-person attendance. Our phone line is open for public comment on the correction, wrong, oh man, get it together. Sorry, folks, reading the wrong page. The public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting in lieu of in-person attendance. The city is providing alternatives for viewing and participating in the city council meetings. Will everyone please join me and rise for the pledge, a pledge of allegiance, please?
Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Good evening, Madam City Clerk.
Good evening.
Please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony.
Present.
Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Telemontes.
Present.
Mayor Frutas.
Present and happy to be here. There will be two periods of public comment tonight, one for the general public comment and one for the public hearing. If you would like to participate in the general public comment, please call now at 818-238-3335. That phone number is 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment period. Tonight, council will be adjourning in memory of former Burbank Adult School Director Emilio U. Rustolti, and I apologize for tongue-tied and mispronouncing his last name, who passed away recently after an 11-month battle with leukemia. Born in Havana, Cuba, Emilio and his family immigrated to the United States when he was just five years old. From a young age, Emilio had a passion to lead and teach, organizing activities like Christmas caroling for the neighborhood kids, and mentoring others through the youth ministry at his church. Graduating from Cal Poly Pomona with a bachelor's in history, Emilio later earned his master's in education from Cal State Los Angeles and started working for the Burbank Unified School District in 1991 as a teacher and later principal at John Burroughs High School. He knew how to connect and engage his students. He loved being on campus, interacting with students, teachers, and parents, and was a great supporter of school activities from choir to football. He also served Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education and became Director of the Burbank Adult School in 2014, where he translated his passion for K-12 teaching to provide quality education for adult learners. Of note, Emilio oversaw the creation of the Independent Learning Academy and managed the FACS program for special needs students. He always had a heart for service, be it with his school, family, his church, or community at large. He had an incredible work ethic and pride for his heritage as a Cuban-American. Emilio is survived by his partner, Jacob, and his sister Alicia, brother Eric, niece and nephews. Join us to say a few words about Emilio is his sister Alicia. Alicia?
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, community members of the City of Burbank, family and friends. My name is Alicia Scow. I'm Emilio Dios's sister. Thank you so much to the City of Burbank for honoring our brother. On behalf of our family, we are truly humbled and appreciative, as I know he would be. My brother, while not a resident of the City of Burbank, proudly called Burbank his home and community through his service as an educator. Emilio knew early on that he would be an educator, and God gifted him with the talent to be a great one. As a family, we always knew he worked hard and was successful in his career. However, it has only been since his passing that we have become aware of the impact he had in the City of Burbank by the lovely sentiments we have received from former students, colleagues and friends. Some of the most indelible comments were from former students, which are so meaningful since they were always at the forefront of his service as an educator. Students commented on how they were greeted daily with encouraging words from Mr. Yu, which he was known. They remembered how engaging he was as a teacher in the classroom. They remembered his positive support for student activities throughout campus and how he was there to help them throughout difficult times. We received a lovely book from the school district, which was put together for his retirement. In a remembrance by a colleague, he said that in Emilio's career, he impacted tens, if not hundreds of thousands of lives. This colleague also recalled that frequently at meetings and trainings, Emilio would ask, how does this help the kids? If it doesn't help the kids, why are we doing it? This says so much about Emilio. He was focused and dedicated to serve the students and families, and we now know the impact he had on this city. In his personal time, he enjoyed spending time with family and friends. He and his partner shared a lovely life together, and the relationship is a true testament to the love and commitment they had for each other. He enjoyed spending holidays and times with his family. He was a loving son and grandson, a loving brother to me and my brother Eric. He was a wonderful uncle to my children and was an inspiration to them. For Emilio, his commitment to the community was not a job. It was his passion. He was dedicated, and he loved it very much. In the last few months, he said to me on several occasions that he was so appreciative for each person God placed in his life, and he felt so blessed by what each person brought to him in their own way. These statements he made embody how he approached his life with humility and with love, respect and integrity for those he shared it with. He truly called the City of Burbank his home, and we know the impact he has had in the last few days when we received these comments. We are saddened by the loss of my brother. He was taken too soon from us. However, we can reflect and give thanks for a beautiful life that was well-lived. God blessed him with the gift which he was able to share to his fullest with so many, and his legacy will continue to live on. We are very appreciative of this recognition tonight for Emilio's service to the City of Burbank and for allowing me to speak in his honor and behalf of his family and friends. Thank you and God bless.
Alicia, thank you so much for sharing those very intimate thoughts with the community and the council. I can tell you that I got to know Emilio for his passion in adult education, specifically the nursing program. I spent a lot of time with that program and watched him how he would, you know, get people involved and prepped them for the state exam, and it was through his kind and compassion that made these people continue to, you know, pass that test and give it their con ganas, 100%. So, thank you. And on behalf of the entire city council, we convey our deepest condolence to your family, friends, colleagues and the students, and remembers his dedication to the Burbank schools and our Burbank community at large. Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have three announcements on city business this evening. Leadership Burbank is creating its 25th anniversary by developing its next generation of leaders. Founded by the City of Burbank in conjunction with the Burbank Unified School District and Chamber of Commerce, this nonprofit works to identify, educate and motivate current and emerging leaders, emerging leaders who live and work in Burbank. Throughout the years, Leadership Burbank cohorts have raised nearly half a million dollars in goods and services for the community, and many alumni currently serve on city's boards and commissions and city council. Also serve on local nonprofit boards or as volunteers for a wide variety of causes. Applications are now open for the 2021 through 2022 class, and candidates are invited to apply by Wednesday, July 21. Leadership Burbank will host a mixer at the Chamber of Commerce on Thursday, July 15 at 5:30. Any and all interested applicants are invited to attend in person or virtually, or for more information, please visit leadershipburbank.org. Not to put you on the spot, Councilmember Anthony, but would you like to say a few words about Leadership Burbank?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a Class of 2018 member, I can tell you it's one of the foremost organizations in the City of Burbank that creates an understanding of not just how city government work, but how nonprofits, how the business sector, how everything interacts. And if you're out there watching anyone who is interested in this program, please give them a call, contact them. You can even contact me. My email's public. It's such a wonderful program that really connects people from all different walks of life.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Item number two, the 110th anniversary celebrations of our great city, the City of Burbank. Next month, July marks Burbank's 110th anniversary as a city, and we invite you, the community, to please help us celebrate. On July 8 at 7:00 PM, local historians Mike McDaniel and Wes Clark will present an online event sharing stories that have shaped Burbank all over the past century. So if you ever wanted to know what about this or that, these are the historians of the City of Burbank, and they sure have a great way of going down memory lane, especially for a lot of our newer residents that moved in. It's kind of a neat thing. Make sure your kids tune in, because this is our city and you're part of our great history now. How it shaped Burbank over the past century. Visit burbanklibrary.org for more information and register for a link. City Hall will also be lit, and Burbank blew that evening. Through the month of July, get out and explore Burbank. Take selfies at key locations throughout the city with our founder, Dr. David Burbank. Complete the challenge and visit any Burbank Library location to get a free challenge coin while supplies last. So we want you to get out there, take pictures throughout the city, and go get your challenge coin. That's a historical little coin. Community members are also invited to submit photos of Burbank for a photo contest sponsored by the Friends of the Burbank Library. Winning entries will be published in a 2022 calendar and preserved for future at Burbank. Burbankfocusinfocus.org, again, that's Burbank in focus.org. And all month, watch for Burbank's social media to learn what other fun facts and history about our great city. We hope you'll join us in celebrating this milestone, 110 years. And to learn more about the city, activities, everything about our great city, please go to burbanklibrary.org/burbank110. Again, go to burbanklibrary.org/burbank110. City offices will be closed on Monday, July 5 in observance of the Independence Day holiday. City Council will not meet on Tuesday, July 6. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 13. As a reminder, if you would like to participate in tonight's general public comment, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Again, that phone number is 818-238-3335. This evening, I have one recognition this evening for Father John Collins from Robert Bellarmine Catholic Church here in Burbank. Father Collins has served as pastor at St. Roberts for 14 years, where he has built a strong bond with his parish and our community. Originally from Ireland, Father Collins felt the call to be a priest from a young age. His passion for social justice, youth ministry, has contributed to the success of many church initiatives, from food drives for the community to religious education retreats. He has led St. Roberts through several milestones, from its 100th anniversary celebration to its renovation efforts, and most recently through the pandemic. Whether baptizing the newest members of the church journey with families through illness or grilling burgers for the parish festival, Father Collins is involved in every aspect of St. Roberts. Tonight, council would like to recognize his contributions to his parish and the larger Burbank community with a certificate of recognition and wish him well on his new assignment in San Marino. Father John, would you like to say a few words, Father? Is he online? Father John?
Father John, can you turn your camera on so we can see you?
Good evening, Father John, and welcome to our city council meeting.
Thanks very much, Mr. Frutas. I appreciate this tremendous honor and privilege for me, and I'm grateful to you and to the council members for such a recognition. I can only say I've had 14 wonderful years here in Burbank. And I think one thing we all share in common, whether you're a city official or in law enforcement or fire department or a teacher or one of our many faith leaders, is our understanding of the commitment to service within a community. And I've been blessed to be able to do that for 14 years here. So I'm very grateful to Burbank and to the people here. And again, I just thank you for this recognition this evening.
Thank you, Father John, for making a difference in our community through its people. Thank you, Father. Vice Mayor Telemontes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Father John, thank you very much for all the years that you've served our parish and our community, not only our parish but the entire Burbank community, for all your time and efforts putting in. I know in the beginning, you were only looking at six, seven, maybe eight years, and now it's stretched out to 14 years. So I know you had a great stay. I know the parish, parish council that I'm a part of, we've always had a good relationship. Anyway, good luck in your next assignment. San Marino, you're not going too far away.
Nope.
But thank you very much for everything you did for our parish.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you again, Father John. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now is the time for general public comment. Members of the public may address the council for up to three minutes. Madam City Clerk, how many folks do we have on call?
Mr. Mayor, there is still item H and I for City Manager and a closed session.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for correcting me. I'm sorry, City Manager. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Mr. Mayor, I do not.
Madam City Attorney, do you have anything to report out?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the public, members of the council and staff. City Council met earlier this evening under closed session for a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation to cases under Government Code Section 54, 956.9, subsection D4, city as potential plaintiff. Also, conference with legal counsel concerning existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.9, subsection D1, the case of Gonzalez versus City of Burbank, a trip and fall matter. And lastly, under Government Code Section 54, 957, subsection A, threat to public services or facilities, and consultation with Don Roth, Lindell General Manager, Jim Compton, Assistant General Manager, Technology Chief Technology Officer, and arson agent, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, manager of technology for Burbank Water and Power. I do have one thing to report out from the closed session. The council on a 5-0 vote authorized the City Attorney's Office for initiation of two litigation cases. Once those matters are formally commenced, the identity of the defendants and the type of action filed will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. That's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Now, Madam City Clerk, how many callers do we have in the queue?
Mr. Mayor, so far we have seven callers in the queue, and we're ready if you are.
Okay, I'd like to, again, now is the time for general public comment. Members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on any matter concerning city business except the public hearing. Please, community members, lower the volume on your TV or computer, and please take your phone off speaker when you deliver your public comment. To participate, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Again, that phone number is 818-238-3335. Ms. Mullins, beam them down, Scotty.
Our first caller is Albert Hernandez.
Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and city leadership team. My name's Albert Hernandez, and I serve as the CEO of Family Promise of the Verdigo. And I'm calling in tonight regarding consent agenda, item number 10, in which the city staff are seeking your approval to confirm a professional service agreement with Family Promise in order to operate the rapid rehousing program utilizing permanent local housing allocation funds. Although Family Promise has been in existence since 2010, it was in 2017 that our organization began operating a rapid rehousing program to help our unsheltered and at risk of homeless population. The rapid rehousing program in which we intend to operate under the PLHA funding source is a housing-first model, in which Family Promise will work exclusively alongside Burbank's unsheltered households in order to help them attain housing and help those that are at risk of homelessness to maintain their housing. The program has various components, including landlord mediation and helping those that are unsheltered to secure apartment units. Regardless of the situation that the household is in, Family Promise will provide weekly case management that includes budgeting, securing employment, and public benefits, all in hopes to increase the annual household income for our families. With the funds that are coming through this funding source, we intend on utilizing 90% of it for direct public support to help those in need. The direct support will be used as rental assistance and security deposits for Burbank households. Households that qualify will receive up to six months of rental assistance that may not exceed 70% of the rent, while the households are required to pay the remaining balance. It is our vision to support at minimum 40 households through this innovative program. As I mentioned earlier, we have implemented similar programs since 2017 and helped over 200 unsheltered families secure housing with a 100% success rate in these families maintaining their housing after the program ends. June 30th may seem like another date on the calendar, but the reality is that June 30th is the date many of our residents are fearful of. Come June 30th, when the rental moratorium is lifted, our community will be facing obstacles that will challenge many of our Burbank residents. These past 16 months have brought so much uncertainty for our renters and our landlords. We have seen so many residents lose work, lose their savings. But with this program, let's work together, the city and Family Promise, to bring some hope to those who need us most, and ultimately to help keep these residents housed. I'm calling in tonight to ask you to consider partnering with us. Let your city staff partner with Family Promise. If you have the opportunity to look closely at the budget that was presented by city staff, you'll notice that Family Promise is investing our own general fund into this project. We want to have some skin in the game, because we see the need.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hernandez, but your three minutes are over. Thank you for the information, sir. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Alisa Cunningham.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Alisa Cunningham, and I am calling with a public comment regarding the Pickwick property. I'm a resident of Burbank and for the past 16 years have participated in various land use issues in our community. Due to nature of my profession and my involvement in state and local land use and housing issues, I was surprised to learn that the Pickwick property was being considered to have the byright residential use entitlement required to make use of the SB 35 streamlined ministerial approval process in order to build townhouses. To be clear, this issue is a result of the state of California mandating these laws on the City of Burbank. It is Sacramento, not Burbank, that is generating this new legislation. I'm wondering, when did Pickwick acquire the use designation of byright residential? Residential use in the commercial recreation zone is not a permitted use in the Burbank zoning use table, and it's not a byright use in the land use element of the general plan. The Pickwick property is not listed in the current housing element or the next cycle housing element as a planned residential use for purposes of reaching the city's current or future arena housing allocation. In the fall of 2017, the Pickwick property was in the process of being sold. The owner of the property and the developer held a community meeting to present their plan of apartments and condos to the community at large. It was understood that they needed a general plan amendment for any kind of residential use. Obviously, if there had been a byright residential use at the time, there would have been no reason for the owner and developer to seek the community's support of a zone change. What happened to the Pickwick property between the fall of 2017 and now that conferred upon it the status of byright residential? I believe you all received a letter from my neighbor on this issue in which she requests that you schedule a special-
Ma'am, can you speak into the phone?
...
Or somebody can help out to raise the volume?
Um, is this better?
Thank you. Please continue. Yes, please.
Okay. I believe you all received a letter from my neighbor on this issue in which she requests that you schedule a special council meeting before August 10. I support her proposal and respectfully request that you facilitate a public forum in order that staff can explain to the council and the public, one, the new state mandate for a streamlined ministerial approval process, two, whether staff believes that the Pickwick property has a byright residential use, and if so, when and how that status was conferred, three, the relationship between SB 35 and the state density bonus law, four, identify all the specific zones in Burbank which the staff believe are eligible for the streamlined ministerial approval process, and five, explain what the community can expect by way of notice, ability to comment in any public hearings with regards to any property in the city in which a streamlined ministerial approval process is sought. As we celebrate our 110th birthday, hopefully we will continue to work together in preserving our existing neighborhoods and building new neighborhoods that will become just as beloved and cherished as the ones we already have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Elizabeth Light.
Good evening. Welcome.
Hi, welcoming, hello to everyone. I'm going to talk fast because I, yeah, because I'm going to talk fast, sorry. My name is Elizabeth. I have a comment, mostly a question about what the plans are regarding the temporary patios that some restaurants have set up in their parking lots. We live behind one of those restaurants. Want to let you know, we have been totally supportive of them during the pandemic. We understand the need and believe in supporting small business. However, they've been saying all along they were going to close it down once they get open completely, and we're hearing grumblings that this isn't the case. They're basically in our backyard, and we can hear almost every word said from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM-ish, and often we can hear them in our kitchen. They frequently open for a private thing on Sundays when they're closed, and that's actually sometimes louder than a regular night. We hear loud conversations, laughing, everything you'd expect to hear at a restaurant, except it's now in our backyard. They're 24 feet from our backyard, separated just by a small alley. My grandfather, five-year-old granddaughter visits. We can't really have movie nights sometimes because it's loud, and, you know, they're dropping F-bombs. They're adults in a restaurant. dropping F-bombs, they're adults in a restaurant. We understand they're just having fun, but they're in our backyard and it's not fair. Property values are going to be affected because we have to disclose when we want to sell. There was a restaurant there for eight years prior to this, that, prior to them moving in, when we lived here and it was never been a problem because it was indoors. This property is not meant for nor is it suitable for an outdoor patio. And we're thinking maybe there could be other options, like put some K-rails in the street on a Burbank Boulevard, they could put tables in the street. It might actually help with the reduction of the street racing that's now becoming worse on Burbank Boulevard, might start to revitalize Burbank Boulevard. You know, there's tons of restaurants out there, maybe that would help benefit, just to give them an option so they don't have to get rid of their patio. But we're just looking to figure out what the plans are from the future because we need suggestions and some options. And I don't want to name the restaurant because they're honestly great people and, you know, we've been so supportive and what, honey? And, you know, in surviving. We wanted them to survive and we've worked really hard to support them, but they can be inside now and it's really been, and it's had an effect on our quality of life. So we're just trying to figure out what the plans are and I guess that's it. I don't talk well in public. I didn't say hello. Hmm? Go ahead. Did someone say something?
Uh, no, ma'am, we don't respond back, but we're listening to your comments.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I don't, I think that's pretty much all I had to say. I, I, no, I talked really fast, but basically the bottom line is we would just like to see these patios, our patio specifically, the one behind us, gone. And, you know, we would like to see maybe some options for these restaurants that are, you know, have really enjoyed having a patio, some options that, you know, other things that could happen for them. But I'm wondering if there's any who I would talk to, if somebody can stay online and tell me who I should talk to at the city, just to maybe follow up on what's going on with this. Is that possible if I stay online?
Uh, no, we're not set up for that.
Okay. I'll just call through city tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, we can get the phone number and somebody, staff can call her.
Somebody will get your phone number and a staff member tomorrow will call you to follow up on your points. Thank you.
That's perfect. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, ma'am. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Jim Phillips.
Good evening, welcome.
I'm a resident of Burbank and I would like to address Mr. Schultz and the public notice that he is sharing a Zoom tomorrow night with our Assemblywoman Laura Friedman entitled, How Can the States and Cities Work Together on Housing? The very first thing that can be done in California is to vote Ms. Friedman out of office in 2022. The issue is not states and cities. The sole burden and responsibility falls on Sacramento while it signs what seems like a Friedman-supported bill per week to take away our local control and gut all levels of housing. Ms. Friedman is no friend of Burbank. I'm taken aback by the go-it-alone disrespect of Mr. Schultz pertaining to the Zoom. Where is Senator Portantino? Where is Mayor Frutos? It's well-known that Mr. Schultz and Comrade Anthony are under the direction and control of Ms. Friedman. Without giving notice to his councilmates, which includes his lackey, Just Telemontes, all of a sudden here's a public announcement of the Zoom. Mayor Frutos and Councilwoman Springer have been fighting Sacramento and its absurd winery and wine scene, no local control, anti-neighborhood bills for years. Yet Mr. Schultz assumes unilaterally the responsibility with his mentor and leader, Ms. Friedman, to host such a Zoom. Why not agendize a council hearing on the issue and invite Senator Portantino and Assemblywoman Friedman to participate in person? It would be a revelation to see Mr. Schultz focus someday on what is best for Burbank rather than his own political aspirations in state politics under someone who he should be opposing every single day, his leader and sage, Laura Friedman. Thanks for the time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Thanks.
Our next caller is Linda Benson.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Frutos, Vice Mayor Telemontes and council members. For many years, I have attended events sponsored and organized by 1111, a creative collection. My friends and I have enjoyed their original and entertaining events such as Receiver Rising and Canoga Park Art Walk. 1111 focuses on communities in the San Fernando Valley and finds ways to bring art, energy and renewal through activities that engage people and draws them to the location from all over Los Angeles. I'm thrilled to see that our city has decided to work with 1111 in the commission of the creation of public art. I hope that this is the beginning of a beautiful relationship. Their events have been in the Mid Valley and West Valley and it's wonderful to have the results of their innovation spread here to Burbank. I hope that all of city council votes to approve this agreement for the Verdugo Aquatic Facility and that our collaboration with this organization continues. I also have a comment in regard to public comment. Please consider continuing participation in public comment via telephone. So many people are coming home from work or making dinner for their families at this time. They can't come in person to City Hall. I understand there is concern about the continuing harassing calls in regard to a bar that is now closed, but your constituents have now become engaged more than ever in the process of government. It would be a shame to shut down this engagement because of a few outsiders. Please keep the lines open. Please keep beaming them down. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Silva Kachichian.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Silva Kachichian. I'm a Burbank constituent and longtime ANCA activist. Tonight, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Chief LaChaz on his retirement and thank him for his decades of service in law enforcement with the last decade here in the city of Burbank. I want to share with you my personal story with Chief LaChaz. My first interaction with Chief LaChaz was on behalf of the Armenian National Committee of Burbank. From the beginning, he made us feel welcome as a member of the community and made sure we knew that we had an ear at the police department, who will listen and then open-door policy. We had very frank conversation with him about the department, the community, the relationship between the two and how we can improve that relationship. He worked very hard to expand the community academy to include, in addition, the Spanish language, the Armenian language academy. Also, when the funding for those programs were in jeopardy, he fought hard to keep those programs because he knew their importance in developing relationship with the communities and his commitment to them. That was a clear demonstration of where his priorities were. Over the years, we developed a strong relationship and worked together on many issues of mutual interest. He did exactly the same for every community in the city. He leaves a strong legacy for this department and this city. I want to wish him well on his retirement and to tell him that he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tim Murphy.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Staff. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it. I'm calling in on item number 13.
Go ahead, sir.
Wanted to talk to you and thank you in advance for considering neighborhood protection. There are just a number of beautiful homes that are going to be heavily impacted by not only raising cane, but the Metro Express Bus and, God forbid, if you guys go through with it, the fixing of the intersection that doesn't need fixing at Verdugo and Olive where you're planning to cul-de-sac Sparks, but everybody else will be open to freeway traffic. So appreciate you thinking about it, doing whatever you can, and I think advanced planning makes a lot of sense. Thanks again for your time. I appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Laura Frutos.
Hi, good evening.
Yes, hi, good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff and Chief LaChaz. My name is Laura Frutos. I've never called in before. However, tonight I wanted to take a couple of minutes to call in and thank Chief LaChaz for his service to our wonderful city. I know I'm not only speaking for myself, I am also speaking on behalf of our neighbors on our block. We live in a very busy street and we have a lot of foot traffic and vehicle traffic. And my next door neighbor had a recent incident that was not an emergency. However, he cannot stop talking about how impressed he is with the police response time. And I see our officers as I drive around town. We are well-represented, representative. We have many young faces of different nationalities, males and females, and it is a true reflection of your leadership, Chief. We are going to miss you during the years, your years of service to our city. I believe our police department is better and stronger and we wish you lots of luck and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, public member calling in. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is John Henry.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Burbank City Council. Yes, I'm calling regarding this continuing saga with Tin Horn Flats and specifically with item L as in Larry III, which is an eviction moratorium, which, there's an eviction moratorium which applies to commercial properties that does not expire until June 30th. Today is June 22nd and as you know, since you've publicized it on your website, Tin Horn Flats was evicted a week ago, I believe. And so how is this possible if there is a city eviction moratorium? First of all, what business does the city of Burbank have publicizing an eviction where you are neither the landlord nor the tenant? You publicized it on the official website of the city. How many other evictions have been publicized on the website? It'd be very easy to check. I believe the answer is zero, probably zero with any other city that has not neither the landlord nor the tenant. So that looks to me like discrimination and harassment and that's something for your attorney to look in. Plus, again, the eviction moratorium existing doesn't expire until a week from tomorrow. So how can they have been evicted? And as this was some, this is a city ordinance, shouldn't the city attorney be acting on this illegal eviction? In other words, if this wasn't Tin Horn Flats, this was any other landlord trying to evict someone during a moratorium, shouldn't the city have responsibility of taking charges against that illegal eviction? So I think somebody needs to look at this and there are several issues here. First of all, why is the city involved in publicizing an eviction? To my knowledge, no other city has gotten involved in publicizing anybody else's eviction. Why is it the city's business to get involved in a landlord-tenant eviction situation? And also, since there is an eviction moratorium that doesn't expire for another week, why isn't the city attorney taking action against this illegal eviction? These are all things that, I mean, the records are all there. You are looking at extending this moratorium. So it's puzzling to me how an eviction could have happened a week ago when there's an eviction moratorium that doesn't expire for another week. These are all questions which legal scholars will look in more detail to me, but I think your own city needs to be looking, your city attorney needs to be looking at, how is it possible that someone could be evicted when there is more time against evictions for another week? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call, sir. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Kevin Muldoon.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Council. I don't know if I've read or heard it announced yet. I'm wondering if you could update the public on when in-person meetings are going to resume in the council chamber. I'm hoping the council and staff have all done their part and gotten their vaccinations and I would really hope we could get back to a little bit of normalcy and have some more in-person public speaking and oral comments and see everybody's smiling faces back there in front of our beautiful mural back in the council chamber. So a quick update on the time plan for that would be appreciated. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Muldoon. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Ashley Gamburian.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm just calling to thank Chief LaChaz for his outstanding service. On behalf of myself and my family, I wanted to say thank you for running such a great department. And I wanted to mention that we recently had an incident where the construction site where we have a new house, there was a break-in and the police showed up within two minutes. And we were very impressed and very thankful for all that, all these nice officers did for us. And I know that that was the, through the leadership of Chief LaChaz and I'm sad to know that he's retiring, but I'm happy for him because I know that he needs to go on and have a wonderful life. May he be healthy and enjoy his retirement. And I just wanted to say that. That's why I'm calling. Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the time to call in for our chief and thanking him. Next caller, please.
Mr. Mayor, I've just been notified that we don't have any callers online, so it's safe to go ahead and close the lines.
Okay. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from city council, city manager or city attorney. Mr. City Manager, before I allow the council members, if you can maybe discuss the three top items?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, Chief LaChaz was not able to join us tonight. He couldn't attend this meeting, but we are, we are all very proud of him and certainly we will be celebrating with him, his retirement. Hopefully, we are currently working on an event, so we'll be getting that save the date out for next month as soon as we can, but we are going to be planning something for him so we could definitely recognize him and we'll certainly pass along the comments from the speakers to him tomorrow. As well, as far as the in-person is concerned, right now, we have, staff is back this month. Next month, we are bringing the council back. So you'll see the council, our next meeting will be, the full council will be on the dais again, and then shortly after that, we'll be working on in-person. So hopefully that following month. That's kind of the basic game plan right now. So it's kind of a three-phased approach. We're currently in step one and we'll be moving to step two with the council next meeting. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Council members, any brief response to public comment period? Who would like to go first? Councilmember Springer, you have the mic.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everybody for calling in. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham, for your comments on SB 35 and your suggestion of a public forum. And I would like, can staff please reach out to Elizabeth, R.E., the restaurant dining, you know, outside her back window? And maybe we can move them to the front, but please reach out to her. Thank you. And also, Mayor Frutos, can you please give the link for our Tin Horn Flats update page? Because Mr. Henry, I think, would appreciate that. And I agree with all the comments about Chief LaChaz, so I appreciate all the calls. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, just real quick, we will definitely follow up with Elizabeth related to the restaurant, so we'll be doing that tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Next council member, brief public comment. Councilmember Anthony.
I just wanted to ask the city attorney, the eviction moratorium, there were always exemptions for those evictions, right?
The commercial eviction moratorium, I'm going, Mr. Mayor, if you please, sorry.
Yes, please, Madam City Attorney.
Commercial eviction moratorium, there was only a moratorium for non-payment of rent due to loss of income or business because of COVID and it is an affirmative defense that a tenant can raise in an unlawful detainer action is not something that the city ever intended to, nor is it written in a way that the city would enforce or take action. But there are, you can be evicted for reasons having to do with non- But there are, you can be evicted for reasons having to do with non-payment of rent based on COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Uh, Councilmember Schultz?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to start by thanking everyone who called in tonight. Uh, just a couple of things. Um, Mr. City Manager, there was a caller, Ms. Cunningham, who asked about whether there might be meetings in the future about the Pickwick property. Does staff have any information about whether or not there there might be future meetings?
Uh, let me bring up our community development director, Patrick Prescott.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Prescott, it's good to see you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be here, haven't stood at this podium for a while. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of, members of the city council, uh, yes, there will be informational community meetings regarding a proposal for a um residential development at the Pickwick site. Um, we don't have the formal application or notice to uh from the app, from an applicant. As soon as we do, we'll have sixty, they will have to consult with the tribes, the native tribes, for 60 days and then we get 90 days to review. The planning staff is preparing a memo for this, for council and the public and we will explain what by right means, what state density bonus means, what SB 35 means, and whether or not that project is consistent with that law.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott.
Welcome.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no worries.
So thank you. My next comment was to Mr. Phillips. I actually just wanted to correct the record. Tomorrow night, I'm really excited to be joining in a panel that's actually hosted by a third-party organization. I was invited to attend alongside Assemblymember Friedbin. Just want to say that I really believe when we're talking about nuanced issues like housing, communication is key, so I hope you'll bring that energy and passion and join us tomorrow. And finally, I just want to echo the comments of so many callers tonight and congratulating and thanking our chief for a well-served career. Uh, his commitment to our community does not go unnoticed, so thank you again to all the callers.
Okay, I uh want to thank all the ca- oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. Excuse me, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to recognize uh uh your wife, Laura Frutos. Thank you for joining us tonight. I know you join us every night, but weighing in tonight is your first time. Thank you for that. Uh, and I do agree to say, my same feelings in regards to uh when it comes to Chief La Chaus. Uh, Chief La Chaus and I uh have been down this road together. Uh, I was elected in 2009, he was appointed chief in Jan- in January of 2010, so we've been together down the challenges and all the good times we've had. Um, so I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. Uh, Ms. Besson had a question in regards, if we're going to continue the phone uh engagement with the community, I don't have the answer, but maybe I don't, the city manager might have an idea how we're gonna proceed after the July 13th, you know, we come back to the council chambers.
Mr. Mayor? Please.
Uh, Vice Mayor, at this point, uh, in in July, we'll still have the phones um as far as calling in, because we won't have an in-person audience. And then after that, we'll be uh looking to have in-person and kind of back to how the rules were uh prior to COVID. So, so if the council wants to change something, uh, they'll need to to direct staff. Uh, otherwise, we're we're gonna be going back to what we were doing prior to COVID.
At least we should consider it. I think I wouldn't mind having a report back, uh, discussing the pros and cons and the cost issue, obviously, how much is involved.
This becomes a discussion, Vice Mayor? Sorry.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for understanding. Thank you.
I was waiting for the city attorney to come on.
Um, it's okay, I'm the mayor, I can, I can chair the meeting, not the city attorney.
Well, thank you, uh, that's all, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager?
Oh, no, I would certainly, uh, Vice Mayor, I would certainly encourage you to add it to additional agenda items if that's the case, so and we'll, we'll bring it back.
Thank you. I want to thank all the community members for calling. My colleagues have hit uh some of the points. Um, I will hold off for the rest, but thanks, everybody calling in. And it's great to hear folks that haven't heard in a while, like Mr. Muldoon. Uh, thank you for calling in. Okay, uh, let's move on. Uh, consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Ms. Mullins, may I trouble you to please read the consent calendar this evening?
Of course, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent calendar, item number one, adoption of an ordinance updating regulations for supportive housing and transitional housing and emergency shelters consist with the state law. Item two, consideration and adoption of uncodified urgency ordinance temporary allowing restaurants to continue use of their private parking lots for outdoor dining. Item number three, consideration and adoption of an uncodified urgency ordinance extending the local commercials, commercial eviction moratorium. Item four, city council minutes and those minutes for May 18 and a joint meeting of May 25th and June 8th and a dark meetings of June 1st and June 15th. Item five, adoption of a resolution extending the local emergency caused by COVID-19. Item six, approval and adoption of the California Municipal Utilities Association Physical Security Plan. Item seven, adoption of a resolution approving the final map number 74896 and related subdivision improvement agreement for 777 North Front Street. Item eight, approval to amend fiscal, the fiscal year 2021 budget to appropriate 150,000 of donated funding for the future Dick Clark Dog Park. Item nine, approval of an agreement with Dyna Fisher and 1111 Creative Collection Inc. for the Verdugo Aquatic Facility Public Art Project. And item 10, approval of professional service agreement with family promise of the Verdugos in the amount of 477,182 for implementation of rapid, rapid rehousing program utilizing permanent local housing allocation funds. And finally, item 11 is approval to amend a professional service agreement with Ardera Group Inc. to extend the completion date for inspection services to oversee completion and closeout of the Interstate 5 North High Occupancy Vehicle Empire Interchange Project. And that conclude our consent calendar.
Uh, anybody have a motion to move consent calendar forward? I see Councilmember Schultz first, followed by Councilmember Anthony. Um, I'd like to pull item number one just for a comment and I'll wait till after the vote. Uh, Councilmember Springer? A mic? Mic? Mic, mic, mic?
Um, item two, I have a comment for item two.
Okay, comment for number two and comment for number one. Um, ma- uh, Madam Springer, uh, do you want to do it after the vote if it's just a comment? Or do you want to do it before the vote to change somebody's mind? Tell me what you would like to do.
I think it's something really simple, if we could add language in um item two to protect like an adjacent homeowner, like um Ms. Elizabeth Light called in. And so it, so there is some recourse, maybe we could help the restaurant move the outdoor dining to the front.
Okay, it sounds like this, this probably will have to go at the end of the meeting because that will have to be a discussion with the other council members weighing in versus just a comment.
Okay.
So, Madam City Clerk, let's pull number item two for the end of the night. Um, uh, mine will be, just be a comment after the vote.
So you're ready for a call?
Yes.
Okay. There will be Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
And Councilmember Springer?
Um, all except for item one and item two.
Item two is pulled, Madam.
Right. Just be one.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Yes, for all of them.
And Mayor Frutos?
Uh, no on item one, the rest, yes. And my only comments for the members of the public, um, the reason why I have voted no on item one is because uh Sacramento continues to strip away our local community. And this is one more thing that I just can't support. I want to work hard to protect our neighborhoods and my no vote, uh, uh, again, is because a lot of other cities are in the same boat as I am, we're frustrated, residents are frustrated. And to me, I, I, you know what, I never get called to the table. So until they call me to the table to talk about why, you know, I think this is wrong the way we're going, I will continue to fight very hard for the protection of our neighborhoods, even if it means pushing back against Sacramento. There's other cities that are also feeling the same, so I respect my colleagues for their vote, but in Bob Frutos' own view, this is wrong, it's changing our community. We've already got issues coming up that we can't discuss right now, but with this particular item, I vote no for the protection of our neighborhoods and it's time to push back against Sacramento. Hey, leave our cities alone, we're a chartered city. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the public hearing. Uh, this is the time and place for a hearing on the city's approval of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Storage Contingency Plan. If you wish to comment on this item, please call now at 818-238-3335. You'll be placed in the queue until the public hearing comment begins. Before we begin, are there any disclosures relating to this hearing? Councilmembers? Seeing none? Ms. Mullins, have the notices required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, including emails and other documents?
Uh, yes, you do. You actually have not received any correspondence, so the answer is whatever you have is, yeah, we do have.
That's what we have. Councilmembers, do we have the material? And you're prepared? Yes, seen some nods, okay, I see five nods, including myself. Uh, will the Representative Burbank Water and Power please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us? Good evening and welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Frutos and Vice Mayor Talamontes, council members. Uh, my name's Asif Sheikh, I'm a principal civil engineer with BWP's Water Division. And I'm pleased to be here this evening to present to you highlights of our 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and request its approval. If we could uh bring up the presentation, please? The California Urban Water Management Planning Act requires urban water suppliers who provide at least 3,000 acre feet of water annually or who have at least 3,000 water service connections to prepare an urban water management plan. Here in the city of Burbank, we have over 26,000 water service connections and we provide over 15,000 acre feet of water on an annual basis. The Urban Water Management Plan is an assessment of the reliability of water sources over a 20-year horizon. Our particular plan has been extended to 25 years through the year 2045 to be useful for an additional five years of water supply assessments. We have been preparing urban water management plans every five years since 1985 with our most recent filing in 2015. This slide compares some of the plan requirements from 2015 to 2020. A few of the more notable new requirements include a five consecutive dry year water reliability assessment as part of an overall drought risk assessment, a seismic risk assessment as well as the development of a water shortage contingency plan. Now, we've been doing uh water shortage contingency planning in the past, however, in response to the severe drought of 2012 to 2016, new legislation in 2018 created a WSCP mandate replacing the water shortage contingency analysis under formal law. While overlap exists with the prior law, the new requirements have several prescriptive requirements um that suppliers WSCP must now include, which we'll review in the upcoming slides. Our 2020 UWMP outline is shown here with our water shortage contingency plan being section uh seven within the UWMP. We will be discussing some section highlights in this presentation, however, the executive summary also gives a great overview of the full urban water management plan. So in order to forecast water demands, we began by looking at population projections. Using the growth model published by the Southern California Association of Governments, we can follow the orange line on the graph to 2045 where we anticipate a population of approximately 115,000. However, we took this analysis a step further by considering local objectives such as the city's housing goals and added this on top of the SCAG projections. The shaded area in green represents the expected population increase as a result of housing initiatives, which yields an estimated population of 145,000 by the year 2045. Now, although our population is increasing, our gallons per capita per day water use is decreasing. Senate Bill 7 required urban water suppliers to reduce their per capita water use 20% by 2020. Our initial water use target was set in 2010 and revised in 2015 to incorporate the 2010 census, which resulted in the target of 157 gallons per capita per day. Once we incorporated our 2020 water use data, we calculated our use to be 138 gallons per capita per day, which exceeds our target by achieving a 30% reduction. To illustrate the effects of population increase on our water system demand, this slide shows our actual 2020 total direct use on the left and our projected demand uh at the end of our planning window in 2045 on the right. We forecast a steady increase in demand, starting with our 2020 deliveries of 18,800 acre feet to 25,550 acre feet by 2045. In 2020, the single-family sector made up almost half of our water demand, but by 2045, that will decrease slightly as the multifamily sector gets larger. The housing element goal specifically makes up about 14% of the projected demand in 2045. And we do forecast an increase in recycled water deliveries, however, the percentage slightly decreases by 2045 as it becomes a smaller slice of the pie. Now, how do these forecasted demands affect our water supplies? This graph again shows 2020 water, actual water deliveries on the left with five-year increments to the right, all the way up to 2045. Each color represents one of our water supplies, with red being treated water purchased from the Metropolitan Water District. Oranges are locally treated and produce groundwater from the Burbank Operable Unit. Purple is our recycled water and the red hatched region um represents the replenishment water that we purchase from MWD and spread at the Pecuim spreading grounds, which helps increase our groundwater pumping credits. As we move to the right, you can see that uh our total direct use is increasing with the orange bar staying the same height, as that represents the maximum production out of our BOU. The bar that increases to meet demand is the red bar, which essentially means we will meet increased demands by purchasing additional treated water from MWD. Although we typically spread around 7,000 acre feet at the spreading grounds, 2020 was a unique year in that we had a healthy balance of groundwater credits and we were anticipating planned improvements at the spreading grounds by LA County, which is why we didn't spread as much water as we normally planned. As a reminder, here in the city of Burbank, we do not have any naturally occurring groundwater rights and are 100% reliant on imported water. Because we rely heavily on MWD supplies, our supply reliability assessment is based on MWD's econometric demand model. Using a 96-year historical hydrology period, the single driest year and five-year dry period were identified and inputted into the model, along with MWD's water demand projections. No supply shortages were identified under these scenarios as MWD has a diverse water portfolio, including dry year and emergency storage supplies. Locally, we assume no change in our groundwater availability and that MWD water is available in dry years, which is consistent with MWD's Urban Water Management Plan. That being said, our water supplies are not without risk. Climate remains one of our biggest natural hazards. Although the supply reliability assessment did consider a five-year dry period, Southern California is no stranger to extended periods of drought. Groundwater tends to be a bit more insulated from short-term droughts, but can definitely be affected by extended dry periods, making water conservation all the more important. Also, as part of a recently completed risk and resiliency assessment of our water system, seismic events were identified as the top natural hazard to our critical water facilities. We are in the process of developing and implementing mitigation measures tailored to each of our critical water facilities to address seismic risk. Also, here in Burbank, we're in a unique position to be able to receive water from two of MWD's large conveyance systems, each with their own unique water quality characteristics that must be monitored. Locally, we're required to blend our groundwater with MWD water to reduce nitrate levels. However, recently, nitrate levels leaving the BOU have been very low, allowing us to maximize groundwater deliveries even in low-demand periods. However, if nitrates were to increase, we would need to blend additional water from MWD, which is costlier than our locally-produced water. Lastly, regarding constituents of emerging concern, 1-4 dioxide is also reduced by blending and PFAs or PFAS, as many of us know, are actually removed by the liquid-phase carbon vessels at the BOU. That brings us to our Water Shortage Contingency Plan. The WSCP is a detailed proposal for how a supplier intends to act in the case of an actual water shortage condition. As previously mentioned, we have been conducting water shortage assessments in the past as required by former regulations. The 1992 Urban Water Shortage Contingency Plan was integrated into the 95 UWMP and the 1997 Integrated Water Resources Plan was then integrated into subsequent Urban Water Management Plans starting in 2000. With the new WSCP mandate, we're now required to submit our Water Shortage Contingency Plan with our 2020 UWMP. Each of the prescriptive requirements were fulfilled by existing city ordinances and BWP procedures, and the overall plan aligns with our best practices. The most notable new requirement is an annual water supply and demand assessment, which will begin in 2022. One of the best ways to mitigate water shortages is to not lose the water. Uh, beginning in 2015 with the passage of Senate Bill 555, agencies are required to calculate losses using the American Water Works Association method. As required for this plan, BWP used the AWWA Water Audit Software to complete a water loss audit and calculate our water losses. Our average water loss of 3.7% is well below the state and national average and indicative of a well-maintained system, which is a which is a big reason why we must keep up on the maintenance of our water system. As our piping, valves, and other water facilities age, we have to continue to invest in their capital improvements in order to maintain our excellent reliability and meet system demands. Speaking of demands, our variety of demand management programs contribute to our robust water supply. Programs like Automated Metering Infrastructure or AMI Systems improve efficiency by capturing customer consumption data and identifying wasteful usage and leakage, which helps to improve revenue capture and manage water loss. Our Home Improvement Program and Retrofit on Resale Ordinance promote efficient water use, while our tiered water rates incentivize water conservation. But some of our biggest potable demand management measures are our recycled water conversions. We now have over 170 sites on recycled water with Talaria, the new IKEA, Disney ABC7, and Nickelodeon making up some of the more recently added sites. We're up to about 3,200 acre feet in annual deliveries. That's over 1 billion gallons of potable water that we essentially don't have to use. And future large recycle water users include Avion and the Hollywood Burbank Airport. And we did list Burbank Channel Bike Way on the slide here, but that's actually already online. So in summary, our plan meets statutory requirements. We also met the water use target uh, set forth by Senate Bill Seven. Our demand uh, expected, highest growth is expected from meeting housing element goals with moderate uh, to lower growth in the multifamily, commercial, and single-family sectors respectively. We ensure efficient water use by everyday water conservation practices, water system maintenance, and maximizing our recycled water use. But most importantly, our water supplies are projected to meet our needs through at least 2045. Groundwater supplies have some risks, but we can supplement that with MWD supplies and our Water Shortage Contingency Plan lays out procedures for responding to drought or emergency disruptions. And so with unanimous endorsement from the BWP Board, staff requests that the Burbank City Council approve the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan and direct the General Manager of Burbank Water and Power to file the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan with the California Department of Water Resources and the California State Library within 30 days after the date of this approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, very much for your presentation. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons of the, of the public who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the city council for up to three minutes on the public hearing item only. To address the council, please call right now, 818-238-3335. Ms. Mullins, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, the lines have been open and we don't have any callers.
Okay. There being no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Does the council have any questions of the staff? Questions only. Councilmember Anthony?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a, a great report. Thank you so much for putting this together. Um, I had just have a couple of questions about Slide 10. Uh, the water supply risks. Uh, you mentioned that there, uh, if there was an increase in nitrates, we would have to, uh, purchase more water. What would bring on an increase in nitrates in our, in our water supply?
That's a great question. Thank you for the question. Nitrates are um, naturally present in, in our groundwater due to um, agriculture and fertilizers and things like that. And so if you think of the groundwater underneath, kind of like a river, I mean, we have different pockets that we hit. We have well, eight wells that are spread across the city. So depending on well configurations and, and, and how water is being pumped, it could affect the different levels of nitrates. So we, we have some flexibility. For example, if we were to hit kind of a pocket in, in a certain configuration of wells, we can always mitigate that by looking at other wells, but the, the, we are required to blend with, with metropolitan uh, water for uh, as part of our operating permit. And so what I meant by it is when our nitrate levels are low, we can maximize our locally-produced water, which is the more cost-effective option.
Well, what I'm asking is, is there a way to tell where in the ground there are pockets of nitrates? Is, are they naturally existing? Do we affect that with our actions commercially or industrially?
I mean, what, well, the way the water is drawn out of the ground can affect it, and so we sample for water regularly through our wells. And so that can kind of give an indication, but it's, it's, you know, until we sample, until we see it, uh, it would be difficult to tell exactly where they are at any given time.
Okay. I mean, my, my concern is if we're doing something, you know, in our industry and the way we are conducting business here in the city, if there's uh, you know, some actions we can take, some mitigations, um, that's basically what I'm, what I'm asking about, if, if there's a way to do that. Or if it's, these nitrates are, you know, deep in the ground and there's really no way we can prevent it.
I mean, the best option is, you know, uh, like I said, configuration of the wells and how we, how we pull the water out of the ground. But once they're there and they're present, um, you know, the only other option would be to treat it as we pull them out. But to control kind of how they flow in the ground would be very difficult.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then, um, my other question to you, uh, you, we're preventing uh, any sort of seismic hazard. What does that look like in, in, in real time? What does our seismic prevention look like?
Well, we identified 12 of our top critical facilities as part of the, the risk assessment. And so each facility is unique in that they all have different levels of risk from seismic events. Uh, things could be like pipelines or concrete uh, reservoirs or structures. So depending on what the facility is and what the risk uh, of, of failure is, those mitigation measures are tailored to kind of each facility.
Oh, so we have a wide, wide range of stuff that we're doing?
Correct, correct.
Oh, okay. All right, great, great, okay.
As, as an example, so some of our, our steel water storage tanks used to be hard-piped uh, with, with, with our inlets going in, but we put uh, flexible connections on the inlets to help the, uh, the tank essentially not rupture the, the inflow of water.
So if it wiggles, there's some wiggle room?
There is some wiggle room, yes.
Okay, great. And then, uh, lastly, I mean, if you have a solution to climate change that we can get everyone on board with, obviously, I'd love to hear it.
I'll be happy to come back when we have that for you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Any other council member would like to, uh, Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you, staff, for the excellent and uh, lengthy report. It made for a good read. Um, I did have a couple of questions. These all relate to Section Seven, uh, which is our Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So my first question relates to uh, Item 7.2, which is the Annual Water Supply and Demand Assessment Procedures. Uh, you outlined how we determine our total available supply, our infrastructure constraints, our expected demand. Could you just walk me through a little more detail of the methodology? How specifically do you gather and compile that information?
So that, that's actually a great question. Um, because the annual water supply assessment doesn't actually begin until 2022, we are still awaiting some guidance from the Department of Water Resources as to how we're going to collect that data and what the actual assessment is going to look like. But what's laid out in Section Seven isn't, um, how we would go about amending the WSCP. So if, if we as staff, we perform the assessment and the intention is to look at your supplies in a given year and forecast one dry year. And if there's any water shortages um, that are imminent, we can come back to council and request uh, either movement up and down the Sustainable Use Ordinance or any other measures. But in terms of the data collection, we're, we're still waiting for some guidance from DWR.
Great, thank you. Um, my next question is, uh, when we look at, uh, Item 7.4, which is a summary of our Shortage Response Actions, I just wanted to make sure I was reading this correctly. So all of the, uh, demand reduction actions that are listed on Pages A1-63 through A1-64, am I reading that correctly? So these are all things that we're putting into effect even right now when we're not in the state of drought.
Correct. So the WSCP, um, one of the requirements was to identify six water shortage levels. And uh, the, the stipulation is if we have existing ordinances in place, we can reference that. So what we did here was we, we did exactly that. We referenced our exist, existing Sustainable Use Ordinance, which has the six stages. And so what you see listed here on the table that you identified are, are consistent with what is in our Sustainable Use Ordinance.
Thank you very much. Um, next question is, we're going to be looking at, uh, Page A1-65. I just had a really quick question about the, the first item listed under Stage Three. So when I compare that to the line above, um, it looks like in both Stage Two and Three, we're limiting the number of days uh, that people can water for 15 minutes between the period of April to October. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm, there's no mention of the months of November through March on that line. Does that mean that there's no watering allowed between November and March or was that a typo? I, I just was a little unclear there.
That, I, I believe your assumption is correct. I can definitely look into that, but um, uh, I believe your assumption is correct that once we go into Stage Three, the November through March window disappears.
So there'd be no watering November through March, but then between um, April and October, we would allow two days per week, 15 minutes of water?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I'm almost done. Thank you, colleagues, for indulging me. Um, the next question I had was on Page A1-66. So this is um, Item 7.5. We're talking about our catastrophic, catastrophic supply interruption and I had a few questions there. So um, in, in the second full paragraph on the page, uh, it's written that if all the city's water supplies were interrupted, stored water and local reservoirs would last up to three days at average use. My question is, is that, does that meet or exceed the industry standard? Is there an industry standard to that effect? I mean, how much water should we ideally be setting aside for a catastrophic scenario like that?
That, that's a good question. I am not aware of any industry standard, but we can certainly look into that and report back. Um, this is kind of more of a function of the available stores that we have in the city, which is, you know, dependent on obviously how much real estate we have to store the water. But if you, if you work out the numbers in terms of what our storage uh, availability is, that's, that's what it works out to. But we can look into whether or not there's any sort of AWWA industry standard on, on that.
Perfect. I, I'd appreciate that. I just want to continue that we're, that, I want to ensure that Burbank is continuing to lead the way and exceed any sort of minimum standard. Uh, in the same paragraph, it writes, "In the case of a major local earthquake, a portion of stored water could be lost due to broken pipelines." Do we have any sort of estimate of how much of our stored water we might lose in that scenario?
It would be tough, um, depending on which reservoir we're talking about. But in order to mitigate that, a few of our reservoirs do have seismic sensors. And so the way they're intended to work is in a seismic event, certain valves would close to try to hold, uh, store water in certain reservoirs and other valves would kind of crack open just partially so that we maintain pressure in the system. So we do have mitigation measures in place. Obviously, in a situation of a catastrophic earthquake, there's really not much we can do. Um, but in terms of, you know, just the regular run-of-the-mill California seismic events, we, we do have mitigation measures in place.
And, and just to be clear, I'm assuming this, this risk of broken pipes, these aren't necessarily tied to the age of the infrastructure, the age of the pipes. These are, uh, this, this could just happen depending on where the fault line might occur or the, some of the effects of the seismic shock.
Correct. I mean, if, if you have an older pipe or a more brittle pipe near that, that epicenter, obviously, they could be more likely to fail. But it, that would just be venturing to guess on, on my part. But yes, it, it's, it, it really is dependent on, on, you know, how the shaking is affecting the pipe.
Okay. Um, colleagues, I'm almost done. Thank you again for your patience. Um, second to last question, the next page, uh, which is A1-67. In the second full paragraph, we're talking about um, uh, prior, so the 1971 Silomar earthquake, the 94 North Ridge earthquake. And the last sentence of the paragraph writes, "Arrangements could be made in the event of a seismic episode to supply drinking water by truck." My only question, uh, to staff is, has there been any provision or thought given to what if, uh, the roadways are blocked or inaccessible? What if we don't have that ability to truck in water? Do we have any sort of contingency plan for that scenario?
I'm not aware of any contingency plan for that scenario, but again, that can be something that we can look into and kind of build into our overall risk profile as we develop these mitigation measures.
Uh, thank you. And that would, that would just be my, my personal suggestion to staff is just another scenario to, to, to factor in. Uh, final question is a relatively light one. Um, on Page A1-68, this is Item 7.8. We're talking about compliance and enforcement. Um, and I was just wondering, do you have any information today regarding how many site stations we've issued or fees we've collected since 2008?
That's a great question. I don't have that information handy, but we will look it up for you for sure.
Thank you. Uh, and Mr. Mayor, that's all my questions.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Springer. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the report. And I have some questions about recycled water. It says that, um, on Page 29, A1-40, that we have up to 10,000 acre feet of recycled water available per year. So how much of that? It, are we recycling every drop we can? And of that, that we recycle, how much do we use total?
Well, the, the number that's quoted there is our total recycled water deliveries. So that is, um, that is what we are using. Uh, in terms of what comes out of our reclamation plant, I think we're about, about half. We're using about half of the water out of, out of the reclamation plant. So we could theoretically use, um, if we identified users, we could theoretically utilize more of that water.
Okay. Um, and so like through 2045, because on your chart with the supply, the recycled water didn't take, um, it, it looks like it just stayed kind of consistent through then?
Right.
So I guess I consider it just a really excellent source, you know, that we use every drop and um, I know other users will come up, uh, other uses that to which we can put it.
Sure.
Um, and I know also, I, I read that direct potable reuse right now is still too expensive.
Right. So the, the, um, graph that you're referencing, uh, so we, we are looking at, uh, potential identified users for recycled water use and the estimated usage that they would have. So as of today, we estimate by 2025, we'll have all of those users hooked up. And then as more users emerge, um, we can update our, our use projections going on to the future plans. But in terms of, uh, uh, direct potable reuse, you're right, that's something that, uh, the legislation is still in play in terms of how that's going to work out. And we're certainly looking at options. Um, Richard, did you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the protocol for interrupting you.
Make yourself at home. Just dive right in and answer the tough questions from the council.
Uh, Richard Wilson, Assistant General Manager, Water Systems. Um, I'd go, like to go back to something that Councilman Schultz said about the interruption of our, uh, water supplies. Uh, if we had a, a major catastrophic failure of, say, the state water project, we do have 10,000 acre feet of emergency storage, groundwater storage, that we would uh, supplement with water that we could purchase from LA. We call that physical solution water. That along with, um, uh, our import return credit of 20% for the water that, that we do use, we could, with conservation, be able to last quite a, quite a while, um, with, with our emergency groundwater supply. So I wanted to make sure that, that council understands that we do have that capability. If we had a major interruption of, for example, s, uh, water from the, the Bay Delta, if there was seawater intrusion from a big earthquake and some of the dikes failed and we had seawater in the, in the delta, that would obviously disrupt our, our supply of water from, from the north. So we would use our emergency storage in that event. Getting back to the recycled water, recycled water, I think, is going to be the key to our future. And um, y-you're right, um, Adam Springer, in that you did not see that, that bar change. But as we look to identify new, uh, new applications of recycled water, we expect that to grow. So once, uh, direct potable reuse is something that is economically feasible, uh, we would expect that to be able to grow. And there's also perhaps other uses, um, for cooling. If we can identify other uses where we could use recycled water for cooling, for data centers, for example. So as, as we move forward, we're going to continually look for opportunities to maximize this community resource recycled water.
Thanks. Is there any opportunity for, um, you know, I think about, I think about what, you know, kind of a motto of BWP is we plan to be lucky. And, um, or I've heard that in the past. And so I wonder, you know, as I'm walking around and, um, you know, we do have some hills in Burbank and the opportunity for like solar pumping to get the recycled water into areas that are higher, um, and from where the water?
We, we've had some discussions about that, yes. As you know, at, uh, the Valley Pumping Plant, we do have a hydro generator there where we, we produce electricity from the excess pressure there. We can do the same thing using the pressure that we have in the reservoirs. We, we pump the, the, uh, the water, uh, you know, in, in, at night and we have, uh, the water flow down later and we can generate electricity if we put in microturbines, for example. And we can also, uh, put solar on our, uh, reservoirs. Uh, so we have opportunities where we could use our facilities to install solar and augment some of the production of electricity that we can get from microturbines, for example.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Any other council members? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, uh, I just want to piggyback on, uh, Councilmember Springer's question in regards to the recycled water. And apparently it was stated that we, we only use 50% of the recycled water that we produce. Uh, do we still sell some water to LA City?
Yes, we are still, uh, delivering water to LA. I, I, the number escapes me exactly how much, but we, we do send it to them in exchange for groundwater credits.
Are there any potential other sources that we could, uh, engage with and barter back and forth?
Well, well, we're certainly looking, um, like Richard mentioned, you know, as, as a lot of these, um, uh, new opportunities for recycled water use come about, we'll, we'll be, um, looking at how we can, uh, exchange more water or use, utilize more of what our, uh, source we have coming out of the BWRP.
As far as, uh, go ahead.
Oh, I'll just jump in real quick. We have been talking with LA DWP and also Glendale, but, uh, mostly LA DWP. They're, as you know, they want to recycle all of their, their wastewater. They want to have, uh, you know, zero, zero discharge. They want to convert everything to recycled water and they have some grand plans on, on how to, how to do that. We'd like to be able to jump on board if we can. And the excess recycled water that's going into the LA River now, if we can give that to LA and they can put it into their direct potable reuse plant to produce water, then we can exchange that for groundwater credits. So we've had discussions with LA about being able to do that. So we're, we're looking at ways in which we can more beneficially use the recycled water, uh, instead of putting it into the LA River.
Yeah, definitely. Whatever we can use, let's use it. In regards to having the capability of taking it up to the mountains, do we currently have the capability to push, uh, recycled water up into the mountains?
So we, we are, um, pushing water up into some of our higher reservoirs. For example, the golf course is served by, um, recycled water. So, uh, yes, we, we are currently pushing it up, up the hill and storing it up there, yes.
So, you know, my, my idea in regards to, we've had several fires here in Burbank over the years involving the hillside. Uh, is there anything that we could, instead of putting it down the river and going into the ocean, that we can use it up in our hillsides to periodically? And I know we do some, some watering prior to the Fourth of July fireworks. Can we do that throughout the year?
Well, if, if you're talking in terms of firefighting, we do have recycled water, um, available for firefighting up, up in the hillsides, yes. But in terms of, I guess, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I understand that, um, but it, it comes with a cost. I mean, when you put recycled water into your fire engine or into your water tender, you've got to just clean it all out. You can't just let it sit. It doesn't, you know, you have to go through a lot of process after the fact, uh, to make sure that your, your piece of equipment is, is, is in proper order. So you've got to clean it all out. But anyway, no, my, my thinking was not so much for firefighting, but just, just for, uh, using that water that we're dumping down the river and making it to use up in the hillside. It doesn't have to have a fire, but the, obviously the, what it would do is prevent future fires. I mean, it will keep them down. It won't prevent them, but, uh, I just hate to see all that water going down the river.
Right. Well, the, the areas, the landscape areas that, that we've identified as being recycled water uses, um, have recycled water available for that. But in terms of the, the hillside as a whole, we can certainly look into ways that we can, we can do that.
And I, and I know there's going to be a cost attached to it, but nonetheless, there's a cost to what we're doing with the water, 50% of it going down the river.
Right.
Uh, so anyway, I appreciate that. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Uh, no more questions, councilmembers, before I weigh in? Seeing none? Um, my only question is, we talk about everything coming from the north, the delta. What about the possibility of, uh, service disruption or cutbacks from the MWD? Because of everything that I'm hearing about Lake Powell and now Lake Mead, um, that looks more realistically if we continue with this current, uh, drought that we're in, at what point is Lake Mead going to really cut back our water supply and how are we set up from the NWD side?
From, from the MWD side, we can actually receive water from both, uh, other large convey systems. So from the north, the delta, and also from, uh, the east through the Colorado River Aqueduct system. So Lake Mead is on the CRA. So, you know, depending on where the shortage is coming from, we, uh, have an ability to kind of, MWD would be the one to decide to switch sources. So we can receive from both. But in the event that MWD does cut back, we would have to rely more on our groundwater supplies, as Richard mentioned.
Is there any conversation with the staff to bring back sooner than later, some of the incentives to get the residents to think about possibly, you know, getting rid of their grass and going to more drought-friendly landscaping versus waiting till we get to stage three or however you guys are going to call the shots on that?
Let me, let me go back to your first question about, uh, state water project. So it's really a great question and that's the situation we're in now. Uh, MWD right now, they have, well, the state has issued a 5% allocation from the state water project, meaning the allocation that, uh, Met normally gets, they're only getting 5% of it because the snowpack in the delta in, in the mountains are so low. They're mostly on Colorado River water now. And because of local storage that Met has, Diamond Valley Lake, Castaic Lake, some of the other locations, we're able to get through this dry season. It's, it's next season that's, that's an issue. And if we continue down this road, which we will, um, California is the senior water right holder, but other states will have to, will be triggered once Lake Mead starts to lower. I believe Arizona is the first one that has to cut back on water use. California is the last. There's a ways to go, but this really underscores the need, and we've been talking about this, all the Met, uh, Met managers of developing local supplies. And, you know, you've got DSal, you've got stormwater, you've got a mix. As you probably know, uh, Met has a new general manager now, um, Adele Hachikaleel. And he ran, uh, LA SAN and he was very much, uh, a part of putting together the LA's One Water Program, which included stormwater and recycled water and treated water. And we are very much focused on doing what we can to generate local supplies without, you know, throwing the baby out with the bathwater. We still need, we still need the state water project. We still need the Colorado River, but we also need to invest in, in local storage. And as MWD works through their integrated resource plan, we're looking at ways to do that. And, and frankly, one of the things that we need to do is just increase the amount of storage available. If you've got more storage, you've got more supply. So there's questions about who pays for it and how much among all the different member agencies. But these are the conversations that we're having at Met that are ongoing and it's, it's a real issue. And you've hit the nail on the head, uh, as far as the state water project and the reliance on the Colorado River.
Is our MWD director, um, really, uh, you know, intimately involved with these conversations with our utility?
She is.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, uh, talk with her regularly and we've talked about the IRP. Rate refinement is one of the issues that we're talking about. How do we pay for these projects? Is it based on population? Is it based on assessed value? Is it based on 100% supply? There's different ways to, to look at how we pay for these things. And these are the discussions that we're having at Met.
And then my final question is, as I'm looking at the data, and it seems like recycled water drops to 12.7 in 2045, where today we're at 16.4. But with future developments coming online between now and 2045, shouldn't our?
That's a percentage.
A percentage.
So the actual total amount could increase.
Okay.
But it might have a smaller share of the pie, which is why the percentage is lower.
Then you answer my questions. Uh, thank you, gentlemen. Don't go nowhere, just in case. Uh, councilmembers, before I close this part of it, any further questions for staff? Seeing none? Then I now declare the hearing closed and the council will now deliberate. What is the council's pleasure? Councilmembers, uh, Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, I, I'm prepared to make a motion unless there's any further deliberation from anybody. Uh, okay, then in that case, I move that we approve the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan and, uh, direct the General Manager of Burbank Water and Power to file it with the California Department of Water Resources and the California State Library within 30 days of today's date.
Is there a second? Uh, Vice Mayor seconded it? If there's no further deliberation, discussion, comments, thoughts, councilmembers, I will ask the city clerk to call for the roll. Uh, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tlamentas?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
And Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes, motion carries, moves forward, 5-0. Thank you very much, Ms. Lindell and your staff. Okay, there are four reports to council this evening plus one, uh, consent calendar item that's bringing, uh, bringing back. It's coming back. Uh, item 13, this is the first report for an update in the Rancho Providencia Neighborhood Protection Plan. I would like to invite Assistant Community Development Director of Transportation, Mr. David Criski. Please make the presentation. Good evening and welcome. It's been a long time since I seen you face to face.
Yes, indeed. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. David Criski, Assistant Community Development Director. Uh, I'd like to give an update at the mayor's request from the March 30th City Council meeting, uh, on, uh, the Rancho Providencia Neighborhood Protection Plan and some efforts that we've taken in that neighborhood over the years, uh, to protect that neighborhood from cut-through traffic, uh, and then to talk about some options, uh, that the council could consider if they wish to, um, resume or look at further protection efforts. And I do have a short, uh, PowerPoint presentation to help me with that. Uh, so for tonight's presentation, I'd like to just briefly go over, um, a, a couple of items, uh, including first, uh, when and why do we use neighborhood protection? Give some brief history on, uh, the Rancho Providencia Neighborhood Protection Plan, uh, in that area. Given, uh, overview of how the general plan supports neighborhood protection, uh, in certain instances. Talk about how, uh, the council might consider starting an update of that Rancho Neighborhood Protection Plan. Uh, and then finally, uh, talk about some nearby and, and, uh, related transportation projects and then our staff recommendation. So why and when do we use neighborhood protection? Um, usually we implement a neighborhood protection plan, um, to respond to, uh, several different factors related to, uh, traffic in, uh, intruding into local neighborhoods. Uh, many times there is existing or anticipated regional traffic, uh, caused by adjacent land uses to a residential neighborhood that's affecting that neighborhood and we need to protect or, uh, restrict that traffic. Uh, sometimes we have arterial traffic, uh, on a major street that is getting congested for a variety of reasons or is stuck at a nearby intersection or otherwise is backing up. Uh, and we want to protect, uh, an adjacent neighborhood mess, uh, neighborhood from that bypass traffic. Uh, and then sometimes the characteristics of neighborhood streets don't match, uh, the traffic that is being, um, uh, used by those streets. So a local street is not meant to have, uh, high-speed traffic or high volumes of traffic. And so sometimes we want to use neighborhood protection to make the street operate as it should be, which is a local slower speed street. So, um, there is a history of city, of the city's, uh, efforts to, uh, protect, uh, neighborhoods from cut-through traffic in this area. Uh, the Rancho Providencia Neighborhood Protection Plan, uh, was adopted by the council back in 1998. Uh, at the time, it was in response to, uh, residents' complaints and concerns about, uh, high traffic, speeding traffic and parking impacts to that neighborhood, um, issues that we're always dealing with. Particularly in with regard to studio development that was happening and continues to happen in the Media District, uh, that was the genesis for looking at this neighborhood. Um, and some of the improvements that came out of that process, uh, which was a large, uh, process resulted in a study, a lot of community outreach to, uh, identify what should be done, what the problems were. Um, that area received several improvements. Uh, they included gateway medians at the entrances to each street into the neighborhood to define, uh, that you're entering a local area and to slow cars turning into the neighborhood. Um, intersections, uh, in certain areas were reconfigured, uh, from, uh, to, to, to true them up into a more 90-degree fashion to slow cars, uh, entering into the area. Uh, street trees and, uh, crosswalk treatments were installed to, uh, help, uh, pedestrians get across streets and also to define the area. Uh, and then preferential parking was implemented on several streets where there were, uh, with spillover traffic from nearby commercial businesses that were using the streets, uh, for parking and, and so the, the neighbors wanted, uh, protection from their parking. Uh, and, and the area of the neighborhood protection plan was, it was a lo- large area bounded by the streets of Olive Avenue, uh, Main Street, uh, on the east, Olive on the north, uh, and Alameda on the south and Buena Vista on the west. That was the boundaries of the plan that was, uh, that was adopted back in 1998. Uh, the general plan that the council adopted actually later in 2013 supported the previous efforts and identified that neighborhood protection is something we still need to be looking into, um, uh, as we develop our city and, and look at, at growth and development. There were six policies, uh, that talk about supporting neighborhood protection, uh, and they're here on the, on the slide. Um, we want to, uh, maintain arterial efficiency. Again, getting, if the arterial, arterials are operating efficiently, we don't have that cut-through intrusion. We have a less chance of that, so we want to keep arterials moving efficiently. We want to consider reconfiguring travel lanes and reducing speed limits to calm traffic. So that's, uh, what I was talking about earlier, where sometimes the street doesn't operate as it should and there's higher speeds or more traffic that should be there and we want to, we want to reduce that. And then, uh, one big point that I think is important is we want to pursue a comprehensive neighborhood protection program. And we do look at these things because we don't want to just isolate one street, uh, and do something that street because anytime you do that, it spills over to the adjacent streets. So we want to look at a neighborhood as a whole. And we, we did that most recently with the Alameda North Neighborhood Protection Plan, where we were looking at specific improvements on, on a few streets, but we were looking at the entire neighborhood to make sure we were accounting for all of the impacts and effects, uh, of any changes that we make. And so, uh, staff believes that that's important whenever we undertake this and the general plan supports that. So in updating a neighborhood protection plan, um, there are some steps that we generally do to kind of identify the problem, see what solutions can be, uh, can be made and then reach out with the community to get buy-in on those potential solutions. So you want to either identify or update the study area, make sure that this area you're looking at is all of the area that the effect, it is affected by this potential cut-through traffic. We want to gather data and that's something we did with the Alameda North, see what the actual traffic volumes are, uh, sometimes before and after something changes. Uh, we want to define what cut-through traffic is versus just the neighborhood traffic. So some folks will complain that there's traffic on my street, uh, you know, it shouldn't be here, but, you know, a lot of traffic on local streets is just the traffic to and from the neighborhood. And I think people will sometimes be surprised at the number of trips that you make in and out of your house and all your neighbors make and with people with more cars these days. So we want to kind of define what's just the neighborhood traffic getting out of the neighborhood versus traffic that truly is cutting through and shouldn't be there. Uh, we want to determine what streets may be affected by the cut-through traffic, uh, using the data and that definition of neighborhood versus cut-through. Uh, and then we will, the big step is applying traffic engineering measures to address the problems on the streets where we identify that there's cut-through traffic. And, uh, we do that by looking at a toolbox of measures that are usually increasing in severity from things such as, uh, the medians, uh, turn restrictions, uh, to things more like partial diverters where traffic is prohibited from entering into a neighborhood but can leave a neighborhood. Uh, and then the most, uh, extreme measure is what we did for some of the streets with Alameda North was an actual street closure or cul-de-sac, which fully restricts, uh, the street and protects it. So depending upon the traffic volumes we observe and the measures that we see that can, uh, address those issues, we may, uh, recommend, uh, an increasing level of treatment to address those concerns. And, and we would also then want to work with the, the neighbors and all the stakeholders in the neighborhood to, to get buy-in on whatever measures we might, uh, prescribe. Um, one related issue that's a big issue is the parking spillover, which happened in the 98 study, is something that we see in other parts of town, something that's being discussed, uh, with, uh, changes, potential changes to Olive Avenue and other areas. So we would want to look at what parking restrictions or, or prohibitions we may want to impose. And then of course, identify any impacts of measures. So like I said before, you don't want to input or don't, don't want to, uh, put something in on one street and have those spillover effects not be accounted for on the neighboring streets. We want to kind of look at it all together. And then sometimes what we do and what we did, what the council did with the Alameda North, uh, plan again, is we want to implement maybe something that's temporary to try it out and test it. Um, that was something that was very successful, uh, the last go-around. Um, so we would want to evaluate any of those temporary measures, uh, to see if we wanted to make them permanent. So that's kind of the overview of how you might go about updating, uh, a neighborhood protection plan. If we wanted to look at this neighborhood and, and look at updating the plan, there are two nearby transportation projects that we want to account for. Um, one of them is the North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Project. Uh, this is a metro project that's being proposed. It's going through the environmental review and outreach process now to add high-quality, high-capacity transit, light rail-like bus transit along Olive Avenue to connect North Hollywood through downtown Burbank, uh, the Media District and into Glendale and Pasadena. Metro's proposal is to remove parking on Olive Avenue to create a bus lane for speedier bus traffic. Um, that would definitely have an impact on this area. Uh, I will say that the city council has already, uh, reached out, uh, quite, uh, strongly to Metro, um, through their public process to say that the city is in support of the project, but not, uh, in the way that it's currently being envisioned with the parking removal. And there's other ways to implement BRT, uh, without necessarily taking that drastic step. So we are working with Metro continuously on that project, but we definitely need to take that into account with the neighborhood protection, because this project would go right along the northern border of the Rancho Providencia study area. And then, the other project is a city project. It's an intersection project at the Olive-Rodigo Sparks intersection. We came to you a couple of years ago with an idea for enhancing the safety and operations of that intersection. I got a lot of public input. The council asked us to kind of put the brakes on that, go back and look at some options that the neighborhood brought forth for suggestions. We're in the process of finishing up finally that. We'll be coming back to you in the late summer after going through public outreach with some revised ideas based on the council and the community's input. One thing I will note that was made mention in one of the earlier public comments, there was an earlier proposal to close Sparks, like a cul-de-sac, and that's something the council was not interested in doing, and we're not looking at that right now. So we are coming back, but it will be in a different format, and we'll have opportunity again for the neighbors to weigh in again with the neighborhood protection potentially to see if we want to continue with some improvements to that intersection. We've got some ideas based on what we heard a couple of years ago. So with that, staff is recommending that the council actually direct the staff to begin an update of the Rancho Providencia NPP. We think it's justified, given the land use changes generally along Olive, and the things that we're dealing with, both in terms of transportation and land use changes, plus the immediate issue with the Raising Cane, which has kind of brought this to the forefront. Sometimes, unfortunately, that's how it happens, where we've got lingering issues that we should address, and then a hot-button issue comes to the fore and shows that we have a need to investigate and update the plan. And so, we're recommending that the council direct us to do that, and we're requesting that you allocate $150,000 in the current fiscal year budget to begin that process to conduct the study necessary to identify those improvements. This funding would come from funds earmarked directly for neighborhood protection, not through the general fund. It was actually funding from the NBC Universal Evolution Plan, EIR. The city was given funding by the developer of that project to address neighborhood protection along the Olive corridor, and we think that could be a funding source to start that study. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krisky, for the presentation. If IT can take the presentation off my screen so I can see the council. Thank you. Anybody would like to start? Anybody? Councilmember Schultz, followed by Councilmember Springer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this item up, so they could come back tonight so we could talk about it. I'll keep my comments really brief. I am in support of staff recommendation. I do think we need to assess and update the Rancho Providencia Neighborhood Protection Plan. The one comment I just wanted to share is that one thing that has become abundantly clear to me through the process is that the neighbors in that area have not felt involved in the process at all. They have felt blindsided by this. And so, my one question to staff, which is also a suggestion, is how specifically are you going to involve them in the process so that they have a voice and they can really give their perspective on the measures that they would like to see to ensure that that neighborhood is protected from the effects of this restaurant?
Yes, Councilmember Schultz. So neighborhood protection plans generally, and in the most specific ones that we've done through this, most recently in Burbank, definitely involve a lot of outreach. Some of the reason why sometimes these take a little longer to formulate is because we do need to get everyone's input, because there's a lot of different perspectives, depending upon where people live and what their issues are that we want to account for. So we would recommend significant public outreach. The previous Alameda North efforts had several meetings over about 18 months to identify improvements and deal with issues that have come up. The previous 1998 plan had also a lot of meetings. Actually, the council established a working group for that. I don't think we need to necessarily do that with this particular update, but we could. But definitely, heavy outreach, meetings to discuss issues, report out on findings, data, recommendations, getting input on what the problems are, that would all be part of what a neighborhood protection update would entail. You know, and because it's in a localized neighborhood, it's relatively simple to do the outreach. You know, you know where folks live. You can do a direct card mailing to them. You can do email lists, all that sort of thing, so we can really get the good input. And the other thing that's been successful in some of these projects, in my experience, is because they're very hands-on with the types of improvements and the issues that people are facing, you can have meetings in the neighborhood. You can kind of go to the corner, go to the intersection, see what cars are doing, talk about improvements. We did that with the Alameda North intersection, and we can do those sorts of techniques here. The downside, if it were, and there's not really a downside, but just a recognition that that does all take time, because it takes time to get people's input. And so, that's part of the outreach process with neighborhood protection plans.
Is that it, Councilmember Schultz? I don't want to cut you off. Yes?
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Springer, you, and then followed by Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krisky, for your report. So does the neighborhood protection plan identify other potential, like, drive-through restaurants so that we can make sure that they potentially don't impact the neighborhood? I know, I think we're thinking about doing that, right? To identify them in the city to make sure that it's kind of a preemptive neighborhood protection.
So...
So, go ahead.
Yes, so the neighborhood protection plans do look at the existing traffic and issues that are affecting neighborhoods today, because that's usually what we can most directly measure. We definitely take into account growth forecasts and expected changes in growth and development that would affect the area. With regards to specific uses that may be influencing, such as additional drive-throughs, staff will be returning to the council with some options for doing some more immediate potential restrictions or protections on drive-throughs. Obviously, the situation that arose at this location caused a lot of consternation and revealed a lot of parts of our code that are potentially problematic. And so, the planning staff, CDD staff, will be returning with some options to address that more immediately. But regardless, even if no drive-throughs ever came in anywhere again, I think there are issues out there and issues with the neighborhood that warrant a look at protection. So we would definitely be looking at existing and future growth and issues that be coming up in the corridor.
Thank you. And what's the timing of Raising Cane? When are they expected to open?
We believe late summer. I believe we've heard sometime in August, or possibly September. September, September of 2021.
So if we give you approval tonight, then you can just hit the ground running with it and do what you can do now? What can you do now before it's open?
So, yeah, we're going to be a little under the gun on the most immediate issue with Raising Cane. As I mentioned, the Alameda North took, you know, 18 months, but we don't necessarily have 18 months for addressing the opening of Raising Cane. So there are some immediate things we can look at right away. We had very good success with the temporary measures with Alameda North, so we could implement temporary measures based on what we know is going to be happening with the access points of Raising Cane. That can be, again, it starts from less restrictive, where you have maybe turn restrictions. You have a permit-only parking. We could put it in very easily. You could do temporary street modifications, like partial diverters or even partial temporary closures. Those things can be done relatively quickly and also give us the opportunity to respond to potential impacts from the restaurant, and also allow us to do a kind of before-and-after measurement of traffic to see what's really happening and what the effects of those measures are. So I would say the menu of options we could do more immediately would be turn restrictions in and out of the street or of the restaurant, permit-only parking, and temporary street diverters or closures, using, you know, K-rail and signage or barriers and that sort of thing.
So that the neighborhood will be protected at the time that they open?
Yes. Now, keep in mind that it's going to be a bit speculative, because we've got, you know, we've got people concerned over what might happen, and then we have what will actually happen. So we may decide to over-prescribe some protection and then realize, you know what, maybe it's not as bad as we thought, you know? Things like IKEA. It opened, it was a madhouse. It quickly died down, and now it's nothing. So we could see something that's much less than we think it might be, and we may over-prescribe. But yes, that is something we could do to, you know, put something in place ahead of the opening if we felt that we wanted to protect a particular street or issue related to the access from the Raising Cane.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, you know, going back to your comment about over-prescribing, Mr. Krisky, I mean, we can always scale back, right?
Yes.
I mean, might as well err on the side of overprescription and then scale back if we notice that it needs to be. Now, you know, one of the downsides to this, because I've seen several of these community meetings, is that you'll still have people that will be upset, because their ideas were not implemented into the plan. You know, it's going to be hard for staff to implement, because it's going to be a lot of input. So, you know, we just have to realize that not every suggestion can be implemented into the plan. But that's what I've seen over the years, when these plans are put before the public, which is great, because we want their input. Definitely, we want their buy-in. But we're all adults here. We know that not 100% of those people are going to say, yes, this is a good thing. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other, Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I wanted to thank city staff for putting together these options, you know, and I want to thank Raising Cane's for responding to the constituents' concerns. But mostly, I want to thank the residents of the neighborhood there for reaching out, especially former councilmember Tim Murphy, having a measured approach, having a concerned approach, and asking, what else can we do? And that's all that, you know, we need from our constituents to move this needle. And, you know, city staff is responsive. So I hope, you know, this all works out. I know there's plenty of mitigation measures we can take. I spent many, many meetings on the Transportation Commission with David Krisky, going around and around about what would work here and what would work there all across the city. And there are definitely options. There are a lot of options that we have, and I hope all of it works out, and the neighborhood is protected, and the business still thrives. So thank you.
Councilmember Springer.
Mr. Krisky, will Raising Cane contribute to the costs for the mitigation efforts, you know, whatever we decide is best and should be permanent? Where is the funding for this?
So, we have broadly broached the subject. I will say that they, based on the entitlement they have with the land that they purchased and are improving, they do not have the obligation to participate in the improvements. And so, the cost of the improvements is going to need to come from local city sources. Some options that you have, the biggest and probably the best option you have is development impact fees. So those are, impact fees are fees collected by new development to offset the impacts caused by that development. In your impact fee program, there is a line item for neighborhood protection. That is how we partially funded the Alameda North Neighborhood Protection Plan, and that is likely to be the source of funding for this if we identify improvements that should be constructed. There is additional money also available in other money we've collected from developments for neighborhood protection that we could also tap to build the improvements. But I would recommend that if improvements are identified, that probably development impact fees be the primary source to pay for those improvements. You could also, I believe, use transportation local return funds as well for those improvements. And some things are much cheaper. So, you know, turn restrictions and permit parking is real easy. A full street closure cul-de-sac is going to be expensive, and then kind of the price kind of varies within the range of options that you have for protection.
Did Cane pay development impact fees?
They did not pay for new development impact fees, because they are not adding new square footage to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, councilmembers? Councilmember Schultz?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just one more thing I thought of. To the extent that we were to explore the option of implementing permitting in the area, I would just hope, and perhaps this is a question, you know, that we would do an extensive amount of outreach to those neighbors, because this would be quite a change for them, and perhaps we could utilize some sort of a grace period, because people are, you know, going to, you know, forget, for example. So I just want to make sure that we're keeping that in mind.
Yes, we would definitely do outreach on that. One option on the permit parking, we have a normal process through our code that's quite lengthy and involves petitioning of local residents, but the council always has the ability to impose a permit parking zone themselves, and we may propose to kind of bypass that long process and go directly to implementing it if we feel from our outreach that that's where the neighbors want to go. Obviously, we would still have outreach noticing, people could weigh in. The other thing, just as a tangent, we are working on, over the next 12 to 24 months, ways to improve and streamline our permit parking program, so that, you know, you're not going to forget the hangtag, because, you know, your plate's going to be in the database automatically. So we're working on the IT side of things over the next couple of years with our police department and our IT department to bring that forward. But yes, for now, yes, you definitely, there's, you know, stickers, and there is a modest fee for the annual permit and guest permits and that whole thing. So, yeah, you're getting your street protected, but you're getting some inconvenience, too. So that's the trade-off.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Krisky. This is my agenda item, and I appreciate all the input from my councilmembers, so I don't need to re-echo. I just want to make sure that we definitely address the concerns and issues of the residents there in a more methodical, study-type way with data to support. And I definitely am supportive of the steps that we took regarding the Alameda North Protection Plan, where it's temporary coming in, so we can really measure and get the residents' input before we do a full-scale implementation. Because I did receive several calls from the neighbors that they were worried we're going to do something overnight, and then the overflow is shifting. So, no, no, I try to reassure them that this is a process of their involvement initiating a study to make sure that we address everything that is, you know, brought to the table, and see which way is the right way to get the community to understand via the data of what we can do, and hopefully, they'll buy into it, and they'll be reasonable about it to help protect their neighborhoods. Because it's really about the input of the residents, because they're being affected. So, councilmembers, if I can get a motion in a second to move this forward? What's the pleasure? Councilmember Schultz?
A second.
A second? Councilmember Springer? If there's no further discussion or comment, councilmembers? Madam City Clerk, may you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talmontas?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos.
Yes. Madam City Attorney, I take that motion as exactly what the recommendation in the staff report, correct? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item. The next item is a review of the annual update to the Burbank Water and Power Wildfire Mitigation Plan. Will electrical engineer Calvin Clark please present the report? Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Frutos and members of the council. My name is Calvin Clark. I am a senior electrical engineer with BWP's Electric Services Division. I'm here tonight to present our annual update to our wildfire mitigation plan. And as you may remember, we previously presented an update to this plan in December of 2020. The reason we're back so soon is we are transitioning to a June update to align with the submittal to the California Wildfire Safety Advisory Board, which happens July 1st of every year. Additionally, for this update and all future updates, we will shift the reporting period for our performance metrics to the calendar, the previous calendar year. So for this update, we are looking at metrics from the 2020 calendar year. If you could pull up the presentation, please? So tonight, I will be covering five main topics. I will briefly remind the council of the legislative requirements that occurred over the past few years. I'll go over some of the changes we made to the plan, and discuss some of our accomplishments from last year, and I will do a look ahead of some of the upcoming activities and next So in 2018 and 2019, Senate Bill 901 and Assembly Bill 1054 were signed into law. This legislation modified the Public Utilities Code to address wildfire risk as it related to electric utilities throughout the state. This was relevant to BWP, because the Public Utilities Code, Section 8387, was modified to include several requirements for publicly-owned utilities. So on an annual basis, we're required to prepare a wildfire mitigation plan, and that includes several plan elements that were listed in the legislation. We are to present that plan in a public meeting and also submit the plan to the council. We are to present that plan in a public meeting and also submit the plan to the California Wildfire Safety Advisory Board. And lastly, we are required to have our plan reviewed by a qualified independent evaluator to assess the comprehensiveness of the plan. And lastly, we need to perform a comprehensive update every three years. So since we first drafted the plan in 2019, we've met all of these statutory obligations, and tonight, we are here just presenting our annual update. So just a quick reminder of our high-fire-threat district here in Burbank. The area you see shaded in blue here is what's known as our Tier 2 High Fire Threat District. This represents an area of elevated fire risk as determined by CAL FIRE throughout the state. This is an area of our service territory where we will be focusing all of our wildfire mitigation efforts. More specifically, we'll be focusing on the areas you see here in orange and yellow. These are areas where we have overhead electrical facilities, and the area in green is either open hillside or areas where we have underground electrical lines, which pose little to no risk of wildfires being caused by BWP. I would also like to point out that the area in orange represents our highest priority area. That's where we'll be focusing most of our mitigation efforts first, and this is along Country Club Drive and a portion of Wildwood Canyon Road, which is to the east of DeBel Golf Course. So we made a couple changes to this year's plan. We made some general updates to facts and figures, performance metrics, and our accomplishments. We also added a new mitigation activity this year, which we'll discuss later in the presentation. So here's a brief summary of how we performed last year. We had no ignitions caused by BWP's electrical facilities. We also had no pole failures in the Tier 2 zone. We completed all of our inspection, maintenance, operation activities. And last year, we had eight days with red flag warning events, red flag warning alerts. And we also had three risk driver events that occurred in the Tier 2 zone. So just wanted to briefly remind the council what a risk driver event is. These are events that occur in our electric system that have the potential to create arcs and sparks. By reducing these types of events in our system, we reduce the risk of those arcs and sparks igniting vegetation that could be beneath our assets and those which could then potentially spread into a wildfire with the right conditions. So we reviewed historical risk driver events over the past 16 years and found that we've had a total of 53 risk driver events in this Tier 2 zone. And looking at this pie chart, you can see the most frequent risk driver event is actually fuse operation on both our fuses that protect our wires and fuses that protect our transformers. That's about 47% of all the risk driver events in the past 16 years. For 2020 alone, we had three risk driver events, two fuse operations, and one that we're classifying as other because we could not conclusively determine the cause. However, this is most likely something momentarily coming into contact with bare overhead wire. Next, I would like to share some of our mitigation activity accomplishments in 2020. Our line crews performed visual inspections of all of our assets in the Tier 2 zone to detect any anomalies or any vegetation clearance issues. BWP did not discover any abnormalities as part of this inspection, and we cleared any vegetation from our overhead lines. We also performed 44 pole loading assessments in the Tier 2 zone. These assessments ensure that our poles have adequate strength to withstand high winds. 12 of these assessments were performed in conjunction with some of our pole replacements in this zone. And additionally, we performed 32 assessments proactively on all of our existing poles that were in that highest priority area you saw in orange previously. That's to ensure that those existing poles still meet those wind loading standards. So after our assessment, we found that all of our poles met our wind loading criteria, and we did not require any replacement or reinforcement. So, still related to poles, we replaced 12 deteriorated poles that were identified through our intrusive pole inspections. In 2020, we also replaced 27 overloaded transformers. We also enacted a more conservative threshold in this zone by replacing all transformers that saw a load above 150% of their rating. So by using our smart grid analytics, we identified and replaced all transformers that went above this criteria, and as a result, we didn't have any transformer failures in last year in the Tier 2 zone. We also completed 100% of our annual vegetation clearance in the Tier 2 zone. We completed this work in early summer to ensure our lines were clear before the fire season. This resulted in the trimming of 795 trees and the removal of 34 problem trees. These are trees that are repeat offenders and that pose too great a risk to maintain. So that's a summary of our accomplishments. I'd like to now move on to some of our future plans. This year, we added a new mitigation activity, and that's the replacement of conventional fuses with non-explosive fuses, which don't create sparks. Now, to illustrate this difference, I have a short video to show as a comparison. This video should play shortly here. When a conventional fuse operates to protect our wires or equipment, sparks are released and have the potential to fall on vegetation at the base of the pole. And as mentioned previously, these conventional fuses account for about 47% of all of our risk driver events. So to mitigate that, we are going to be replacing these with non-explosive fuses. So here's a short video to kind of show you a comparison. As you can see, there's a small puff of smoke, but no sparks are released at all during the operation. So to help further reduce risk even more in this Tier 2 zone, we're planning on replacing all of our fuses in the Tier 2 zone with these non-explosive fuses by June of 2024. We are also completing three additional engineering studies for potential additional mitigation activities. The first is a pilot project for the installation of what is called composite poles. That's the pole you see in black on the left there. These type of poles are made of a wound fiber material, and they offer many benefits over wood poles, including increased strength and longevity, reduced maintenance costs, and improved fire resistance in case a fire were to go through this area. Additionally, these poles are modular, which means they come in two or three pieces and can be installed on location. This provides increased crew safety and efficiency, especially in these hard-to-reach areas on the hillside. We've installed two of these poles already, and we'll install an additional five this year in the Tier 2 zone to complete our pilot project, and we'll make a full determination for implementation by the next plan update. We're also considering covered conductor as a mitigation activity. This technology could potentially help reduce the frequency of other risk driver events that involve our bare overhead wire. So if mylar balloons or vegetation comes into contact with these covered conductors, there would be no sparks created. This is due to the protective insulated material that surrounds the wire. These wires are also steel reinforced, which means they are stronger than some of our older bare copper, and that can help reduce the likelihood of wires breaking and causing a downed-wire event. So we will be performing an analysis of where this technology could be implemented within the Tier 2 zone by the next plan update. Lastly, we're considering the use of infrared inspection technology. This was a recommendation in the report done by our qualified independent evaluator. They've identified it as an industry best practice. So we're looking into it as this technology can be used to help us identify loose or poor connections in our overhead system, and we can find that by looking for abnormal hotspots that can't be seen by the naked eye. So by incorporating this technology into our inspections, we could potentially identify and fix problems before they lead to failure. So lastly, I just wanted to cover some next steps. On June 3rd, we presented this plan to the BWP board. They provided some positive feedback on this year's plan update. We also posted our plan on our website in June, and we will be accepting public comments until July 1st of 2021. After tonight's council meeting, we'll be submitting the plan to the California Wildfire Safety Advisory Board. And as I mentioned, going forward, council can expect to see us back in June for the next annual update. So in closing, BWP remains committed to doing our part as a prudent manager of our electric system to protect our community from wildfires. We continue to use our past performance and metrics to continually improve this plan year after year. And since this plan was developed in 2019, our staff has ensured that the document satisfies all aspects of state legislation. So with that, our recommendation for council tonight is to recognize that and verify that stated work, and secondarily, to direct BWP to accept comments through the end of the open public comment period, which is July 1st of 2021. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you all for your time and attention, and I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you very much for your presentation and the information. Councilmembers, any questions? Vice Mayor, followed by Councilmember Schultz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. Very detailed and very interesting in regards to some of these new best practices that we're looking at implementing. Have they come from other fires that have been caused in other areas of the state? And have they come as a recommendation of those incidents?
Yes. So we consistently keep up to date with our neighboring utilities or some of the large IOUs, and we've kind of learned from a lot of the best practices across the industry. And we've been very strategic and thoughtful with choosing technologies that are applicable to our service territory. So a lot of these ones that I've mentioned tonight are kind of tried-and-true mitigation methods that have been used across the state.
And at what point will you say, or your staff or Burbank General Manager say, let's go with it? I guess it's all a matter of cost and how fast we can implement this?
Absolutely. Cost is a big factor, and it's really looking at our service territory. And when we looked at our risk driver events and seeing that 40, almost half of our risk driver events were fuse operations, that seemed like a perfect, fairly low-cost mitigation activity that could address nearly half of those items. Some of the other items will definitely take some analysis because they would be a little bit higher cost than, let's say, a fuse replacement. And in some portions of our system, such as our highest priority area, that may be the best course of action.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the report, and I'm fully supportive of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to piggyback off the vice mayor's questions and comments, it's clear to me, I've spent a little bit of time in my professional job looking at utility practices, and it's clear that BWP has an incredible plan in place that I think is, quite frankly, bar none to many others. I did have just two quick questions. The first was on Slide 22, when you were talking about the composite pole pilot program. If I remember reading in the report correctly, I think you're actually using poles from different manufacturers, right, to figure out which pole would be the best for us?
That's correct. And there's a little bit of explanation there because the first manufacturer we used for the first two composite poles, they're no longer in business, unfortunately, but we did find a new manufacturer that does make a comparable modular pole that's been used across the industry. So that's why we're doing five additional pole replacements with this new manufacturer just to validate that this will meet our standards.
Okay. Hopefully, they won't go out of business.
Absolutely. We're hoping.
And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up, because I didn't see it in the slideshow, but I believe item 5.5 of the plan, did I read correctly that you were mentioning that in next year's update, you're also going to be looking at possibly incorporating a preemptive de-energization policy?
So preemptive de-energization, or as it's known in the industry, public safety power shut-offs, is not, still not a mitigation activity that we feel is necessary based on our risk level and all of the activities we're performing in Burbank. It also has to do with our fairly dense configuration. We don't have any rural circuits that go out. It's not manageable. However, what we are, we're going to implement is working with our emergency coordinator to incorporate some communication plan in the case that, in the rare circumstance that we might have to incorporate some sort of preemptive de-energization, we want to make sure that we have a plan in place to communicate that effectively with the public. But it's still not a mitigation activity we're identifying currently.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers have any questions, comments? Councilmember Springer?
Thank you for your report. I have no comments. I mean, no question.
Okay. Then I'll weigh in with my last comments before we move to the vote. So we're talking about the utility and the fire, and where does it sit in this report regarding the methane power plant that we have up at our land waste dump site up there?
That is not something I've considered, but that's absolutely something we can look into to assess if that poses any sort of wildfire risk.
Yeah, because we're generating up to 500 houses of energy, so I would have, I didn't read it in the report, so hopefully, when you come back in June, I'd like to see that be part of it, just to make sure we covered all our bases, as it does involve we're generating power for 500 homes. So I'd like to see that in the next report.
Absolutely. I appreciate that feedback, and we will definitely look into that and give you an update the next cycle.
Great. Thank you so much. With that being said, council, if I can get a motion in a second to move this forward? Vice Mayor, motion?
That we accept the recommendation of staff.
Okay, as written in the staff report, correct, Vice Mayor?
Yep, as written in the staff report, yes.
All right. Councilmember Springer, you were seconding this? Okay. If there's no other comments, councilmembers. Madam City Clerk, please call for the roll.
Vice Mayor Talamontas?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you for your report, sir. Have a good evening. Okay, council, moving on to our next agenda item. This will be approval of BWP's electric vehicle commercial charging station rebate program. Will electrician engineer associate Drew Kidd please present this item? Good evening and welcome, sir.
Good evening. I'm actually Glenn O'Young, marketing associate, but I am joined by Drew. We're a team, serving your pleasure. So it's very nice to meet you. Tonight, we're very honored and excited to present our commercial EV charging station rebate program. As I mentioned, I'm Glenn O'Young from the BWP Customer Service and Marketing Division.
I'm Drew Kidd, electrical engineering associate 2 with Burbank Water and Power's Customer Service and Marketing Division.
And, got a mic? Great, sorry.
If you can, Mr. Kidd, if you can please reintroduce yourself for members of the audience at home watching. Thank you.
No problem. My name's Drew Kidd, electrical engineering associate 2 with Burbank Water and Power's Customer Service and Marketing Division.
All right. So we got the A-team. Please continue with your presentation.
We sure hope so. So tonight, we're very pleased to present this program to you and then also ask, of course, for your approval and any questions that you may have. Oh, do we have the slide up? I'm sorry. Just wanted to make sure. Oh, I'm clicking, sorry. So what we have here in front of you is excerpt from our marketing section's recently-completed five-year plan. This slide shows an excerpt, again, focusing on the transportation electrification element of our plan. In this space, our objective is to increase access to electrified transportation and greenhouse gas reduction opportunities for all. We plan on driving EV adoption by promoting awareness, building an expansive network of public charging stations, and promoting charging station installation by residents and businesses. We have aggressive goals, and there's much work to do. This is a snapshot of our transportation electrification program portfolio, and I'd like to just bring you up to speed on where we are in our roadmap. Earlier this year, we launched our online EV buyer's guide as part of our effort to build EV awareness. On the public charging front, we've just completed the installation of 26 new charging ports throughout the city, including our largest installation across the street with our good partners at CDD and Public Works. Many of the charging stations that we installed recently provide access to overnight charging, which is very important for folks who are renters. We're working to electrify our own fleet at BWP to walk the talk, and tonight, again, we're here to talk about the commercial EV charging station rebate program, which, in addition to workplace charging, can support electrification in multi-unit dwellings and So one question that we want to cover first is why are we doing this? The city of Burbank has very aggressive greenhouse gas reduction goals, which flow through our general plan and the greenhouse gas reduction plan, as well as BWP's plans, including our 2019 IRP and our transportation electrification plan. As our friends at CDD have shared, greenhouse gas emissions from transportation are actually the largest piece of that pie at 43%, and commercial charging plays a very significant role in the opportunities to reduce those.
The primary source of funding for transportation electrification comes from the low-carbon fuel standard program. This
the low-carbon fuel standard program. This generates $1.2 to $1.7 million annually. Those proceeds must be spent to benefit electric vehicle drivers. The categories for spending are awareness, rate incentives, and on electric vehicles and electric vehicle infrastructure. Importantly, these proceeds do not come from ratepayer dollars, so they do not have direct rate impacts. Commercial customers have a huge role in transportation electrification. For the purpose of this rebate, commercial customers are considered to be our businesses and also the common areas of multi-unit dwellings. So over 128,000 vehicles commute into Burbank every workday. This is an opportunity for electrification for commercial customers. This is beneficial electrification as workplace charging have as long dwell times as during the daytime, which gives us an opportunity to integrate renewable energy, such as solar, that is available during the day. So this makes it ideal not just for our transportation electrification goals, but also, as Glenn mentioned, our greenhouse gas reduction goals. An important facet of this commercial rebate are the multi-unit dwellings and the disadvantaged communities. 61% of all residential dwellings in Burbank are multi-unit dwellings. And these are a focus due to the challenging nature of expanding infrastructure in those types of locations. There's a high cost and complexity involved. Furthermore, approximately 25% of Burbank residents live in a disadvantaged community. The population lives in a disadvantaged community, has higher exposure to greenhouse gases because they live right next to a freeway. So disadvantaged communities are a focus for transportation electrification because they are more impacted by vehicle emissions. Layer on top of that, low-carbon fuel standard funding has spending requirements for disadvantaged communities. Due to this, our commercial rebate will be targeted to invest in multi-unit dwellings and disadvantaged communities.
Considering these three segments, commuters, multi-unit dwellings, and disadvantaged communities, I'm going to show you how we've designed the rebate structure for these commercial customers to overcome the major barriers of cost and complexity. What you have before you is a high-level graphic of a typical charging station installation. As you can see, on the left, there are utility side costs, and on the right, customer side costs after the meter. These collectively represent the cost barriers that commercial customers face when they choose to adopt EV charging. Our current rebate doesn't take into account whether or not utility infrastructure upgrades are needed, but this new proposed plan does. Some customers will not need to make investments in utility upgrades. And for those, they can anticipate spending about $15,000 to install a dual-port Level 2 charging station, so a charging station with two ports. If customers do need to make upgrades to the utility infrastructure, their costs will almost double to approximately $29,000. As I mentioned, our proposed rebate structure takes this into account. And it also recognizes whether a site is in a disadvantaged community, or a multi-unit dwelling, or will grant access to the public. Those sites that fit that criteria will be eligible for a premium rebate. And when you look at the graphic and look at the cost, basically in our standard rebate, we're accounting for, the rebate would account for approximately a quarter of the costs that we estimate. On a premium level rebate, again, those are those that fall into a DAC and MUD, or will grant the public access, we're covering over 50% of the cost through the rebate. So I'm going to walk you through each scenario, because there are many different kind of criteria elements here, so I'm just going to kind of go one by one. So here we have a standard rebate with no utility upgrade needed, as you can see on the graphic on the left. On the right, in the blue square, you can see for a Level 2 and DC Fast Charger, the rebate would be $1,800 per port. So again, on a dual charger, that's $3,600. In the next scenario, we have a standard rebate where a utility upgrade is needed. And as you can see on the chart on the right, the amount doubles basically to $3,500 for Level 2 and DC Fast Chargers. I'm going to move on to our premium rebate, which again, is reserved for DACs and MUDs and commercial sites that will give the public access to their charging stations. Again, this is in line with our goals of reducing GHG throughout the city and being inclusive of renters and citizens who live in DACs. Here, as you can see, the rebate levels would be $3,500 for a Level 1 charging station and $4,000 for Level 2 and DC Fast Charger. One point I want to make about Level 1 is, this is not necessarily a charger that we consider to be really that efficient, or really going to meet the needs for the vehicles that are coming out now. However, as you can see, we're constraining those and making those available in the multi-unit dwelling setting, because for those renters, that may be the only type of charging they can have access to. And in our last scenario, we have a premium rebate with utility upgrade needed. And as you can see, the rebate jumps up to $7,500 per port. So those are the costs and those are the rebate levels. But something that we want to do as good stewards here at BWP of any kind of resources is compare ourselves to our peers and make sure that we are striking a balance between generating demand, but also, again, being very good stewards of the money. So how do we compare against our neighboring utilities? If no upgrade is needed, in the green bar right there, you can see, we fall below the 40th percentile in terms of the amount that we're proposing in our rebates. We would be giving out the second to least with Glendale as the lowest. If an upgrade is needed, we'll be the only utility to formally recognize the cost burden by providing an enhanced rebate. So we'd be giving out $7,000 as part of the rebate. And so those were our standard levels. On the premium side, again, in the MUD or DAC, we would now be in the 67th percentile, so still not giving away the most, would be $8,000 behind Pasadena and above LADWP if an upgrade is needed. And once again, if no upgrade is needed, I apologize. If an upgrade is needed, we would once again be in the lead, recognizing the difficulty for multi-unit dwellings and disadvantaged communities.
Thanks, Glenn. Glenn spoke a lot about how we're going to help our customers overcome their barriers to adoption due to cost. But there are other barriers to adoption, and one of those can be customer choice. As Glenn mentioned, we're extending this rebate to include Level 1 charging for multi-unit dwellings. And the reason for that is, it's much easier to install these kinds of charging stations without those, without expensive upgrades. So we hope this helps extend access to home charging to drivers that would otherwise be unable to access home charging. This commercial rebate is also being updated to include DC Fast Chargers. Again, this gives our customers ability to choose charging stations that are right for them. So the final piece of the puzzle is requiring a load management plan. The load management plan is important to let customers know that they have their own role in renewable energy integration. When this rebate launches, the only thing customers will have to comply with today is to pass through our time of use rate to their end users, but we're laying the groundwork to integrate future renewable energy. Customers will agree to participate in future demand response programs and to also share data with us when we're ready to receive it.
So with your approval, we are targeting a launch date in mid-October for this program. There's a significant amount of work to do across several fronts, including developing the terms and conditions, the application, the load management plan that Drew just mentioned, as well as other core customer content. In our first fiscal year, we're proposing a budget of $700,000, and we think that we can address the need for 75 to 100 additional commercial charging station ports with that budget. So with that, once again, we ask for your consideration and approval, and Drew and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you both for your presentation. Councilmembers, who would like to start? Can you clear the screen, IT, so I can see the council? Thank you. Councilmembers, who would like to start with the first question? Councilmember Springer?
I have no questions, and I just am in support of this. And I just think it's really a good idea that BWP is doing this and being aggressive about the rebates. So I wouldn't, I'd make the motion when it's time, after the answer.
Okay, then, Councilmember Springer, I'll come back to you to make the motion. Any other questions or comments, councilmembers? Seeing none? I will weigh in with my last comments. I'm definitely going to be supporting this because we do have, you know, a lot more folks that live in multi-units, apartments, and meeting the governor's plan of basically no more, you know, combustion internal engines. As we go into the future, I like it that you guys are taking the leadership role and building that infrastructure so people can make that decision in the next five years, hey, should I get an electric car or not? Even though we know it's coming, at least Burbank is at the forefront to help out folks living in apartments and multifamily homes. So Councilmember Springer, please make the motion?
Sure. I move to approve Burbank Water Empower's electric vehicle commercial charging station rebate program.
Do I have a second? I saw Councilmember Schultz raise his hand first. If there's no further comments, councilmembers, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Springer? Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
And Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talamontas?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes, and you guys are the A-team, because there wasn't any questions, no comments. Wow, you got all the message out there, and you got a 5-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is my last day of probation, so this is very memorable, and my mom's watching, so thank you very much.
You know what? If the city manager was in this room, he needs to buy you lunch because you made probation.
I hope so.
If he was here, I'd tell the city manager, buy him lunch. He's off probation.
There's a few more hours left, and I'm gauging the reaction, so thank you again.
Hey, thank you for your presentation, guys, and congratulations on finishing up your probation. A-team way to go. Okay, our last report, but we got one more from Consent Calendar, is information on parking management for Burbank Farmers Market. Will Administrative Analyst Nick Berant?
Berant.
Berant.
Yes.
Please make the presentation and welcome to our council meeting, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Nick Berant. I work in the Transportation Division of the Community Development Department. I'm here tonight to discuss the Burbank Farmers Market and how the city manages parking for it. Yeah, please, thank you. So the Burbank Certified Farmers Market operates in the main Community Services Building, or CSB, parking lot every Saturday morning, rain or shine. As a result, the main CSB parking lot is full due to the Farmers Market. Six parking lots or structures are available within two blocks of the Farmers Market, and these parking lots have over 1,000 spaces combined. A parking study from 2019 showed that occupancy in those six parking lots and structures was fairly low on Saturday mornings. The weighted occupancy was approximately 35%, meaning that within two blocks, there are usually over 600 parking spaces available. On top of all that parking lot and parking structure spaces, on-street curb parking is also available on Glen Oaks Boulevard, Olive Avenue, and Orange Grove Avenue. The main CSB lot is used throughout the week by the Farmers Market, city employees, and visitors on city business, commercial visitors to the Burbank Town Center and San Fernando Commercial Area. This is a great example of the concept of shared parking, where parking lots used by different businesses or uses are not needed throughout the course of a day and can therefore be shared by all of the nearby businesses and uses. STAFF is expanding this concept of shared parking to shared electric vehicle parking, or EV parking. 16 new EV chargers were recently installed at the upper CSB lot on June 10, 2021. The thrust behind citing these chargers in this lot is to reach three target markets: employee parking, as many city employees park there. It serves as commercial parking to serve the San Fernando Commercial Area and the Burbank Town Center, and to serve residents of the many multi-unit dwellings above Glen Oaks Boulevard. STAFF held a meeting on Zoom with the Farmers, with a Farmers Market representative on April 19. The representative expressed support for the project as Farmers Market patrons have asked about nearby charging options. The representative relayed concerns about the lot closure, as it is the closest to the Farmers Market. In response, STAFF asked the contractor if the lot could be partially left open on weekends, which the contractor was able to arrange. The Farmers Market uses the main CSB parking lot on Saturday mornings. Abundant parking is available to serve Farmers Market patrons and vendors. Furthermore, it's able to take advantage of the concepts of leveraging underused parking and of shared parking. The 16 new EV chargers at the upper CSB parking lot will extend this concept to electric vehicles and allows the city to test how EV chargers are used by different market segments as it implements the city council's parking management principles. That concludes my presentation, and I am available to take questions and answer them.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer, would you like to go first?
First, Mayor, thank you very much for asking for this item on the agenda.
Yes.
And I, the Farmers Market has asked me to reach out and communicate a few ideas and issues. And they're, they're very grateful to be there on the CSB parking lot. They work behind City Hall, but they're, this is a better location for them because they don't have to move when there's the ice skating, when you can, that kind of thing. And a lot of, it was very important, a very important place for our residents to shop, especially during the pandemic. It was easy to manage safety protocol. And they asked that the 16 parking, 16 EV spaces in the lot, if they could use those on Saturday mornings. And I know it's early. It's just two Saturdays that they're open for electric vehicles. And there was just one car plugged in, and most of the spaces were vacant. And it's 16 spaces that they don't have the use. And they are open from about 7:30 AM on Saturday until about noon. And I know it's probably too early to measure the demand for EV charging at that time and that location. Another thing asked is, recently, the parking on, across the street on Olive, the curb parking was eliminated from 8 until 1. There, the plan was, there are jaywalkers. People, the way they shop there, and I know there is abundant parking around, but people will park on the curb on Olive, across the street from the market, and they'll dash across the road and get eggs, get berries, and they'll dash back. And so the Farmers Market worked with those patrons to convince them to use the crosswalks at the light at Glen Oaks and also at Third. But, and the plan was that there would be warnings and then tickets for jaywalking if they didn't comply. But what happened was there, somehow in the communication, sign went up, no parking, Saturday mornings, 8 AM to 1 PM. So probably about 10 spaces were eliminated. So if you combine that with the 26 spaces in the lot, excuse me, 16, that's 26 spaces that they don't have use of. And so they've asked if the signage could be reversed on Olive so that people could park there. And for a safety measure, instead of no parking signs, put no jaywalking signs, use the crosswalks, or put a crosswalk there. And I have to say that there are people, there are some small office buildings on that side of Olive, and people do work on Saturday mornings. They park there. And so without that, they can't. They are supposed to park in the courthouse lot on Angelino and Third. And also, probably some people from another broken egg park. Some of the spaces are reserved for the courthouse. I don't know if they're even enforced on Saturday, but what's, what's happening is that parking has been allowed there probably since the beginning of time. People don't read the signs, so they still park there. Some of them get tickets, some of them don't. They get mad. They're mad at the market. They're mad at us. They're mad at the city. And they still park there. Some of them aren't caught. They dash across the road. They get their eggs. They get their berries, and they dash back. So what they're asking is to please reinstate the parking on Olive and then just include they get their berries, and they dash back. So what they're asking is to please reinstate the parking on Olive and then just include a safety measure there. Either just a marked crosswalk, it's mid-block and a slow sign, some slow signs, or a crosswalk with a push-button, you know, so. And the no-jaywalking signs, I, we might just ignore them. I don't know, you know? We, they were trying to get them to go, but the way people shop there, there are the people who dash in and dash out. And then there are people, it's part of their social, their social life there on Saturday mornings. If you have not been, I recommend that you go. Because it is, it's a nice experience. You always see somebody you know, and if you like to gaze at fruits and vegetables, they have them. And the eggs there just happen to be very, very popular. Some people just go there to get eggs. And so that's what they ask of us. And the money, the proceeds after expenses go to the Providence St. Joseph Foundation to help people with medical costs who don't, you know, who need funding. And so they charge, ag culture, I think, 10% and non-ag, 10%. There's somebody who sells soap. And I don't know what the other non-ag is, but that's where the proceeds go, after, you know.
Councilmember Springer, may I please bring you back to the issue of parking and your points?
Yes.
So I can move the meeting? Thank you for understanding, ma'am.
So that's what they ask. It's a community asset, and they're asking for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Tlomontas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask either Mr. Chriskey or Mr. Berant, what was the reason of putting the no-parking signs across the street on Olive?
These were installed to help curb jaywalking across Olive.
Yeah, so it's a safety concern, obviously?
Yes.
Okay, so even if we put signs up, if there's still parking when it says no parking, and some are getting tickets and other are getting away with it, nobody's, they're not gonna, the majority are not gonna pay attention to no jaywalking. You know, it's just one of those, it's unfortunate. There's a couple of, obviously, crosswalks at each end of the block. It's a little inconvenient. What about if we would place parking available up at the sixteen EV parking spots available from, let's say, 7 to 12 on Saturdays? Could we, could my colleagues endorse that? Would you be willing to go forward if we get, put some signage up there on the sixteen parking spots that the EVs are taking over?
Yes.
Just on Saturday from 7 to noon?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Mr. Chriskey, you have a point?
Yes, certainly, the council's prerogative can certainly adjust parking regulations. I will say that we would have to check, we may require, be required to amend the municipal code, because right now EV charging spaces may not be used by non-EVs who are charging. So the council would need to make a code amendment for an explicit exception to that, to that code.
Well, that would be something I would recommend if we went down. Is it cumbersome, Mr. Chriskey? Did it go through that process?
I don't, it's probably a simple change, so we can certainly probably accommodate that. We would have to research that definitely and check with the city attorney also, but that's my understanding of the code.
Okay. You know, I understand the no-parking, it's a safety issue. We don't want people crossing in the middle of the street. Because it's against the law to jaywalk, period. So if you take it upon yourself to park there and then dash across, you're jaywalking, which you're breaking the law. And then you buy your, you buy your eggs and your berries and dash across again, you're jaywalking again. So in the interest of helping the Farmer's Market out, I would suggest that maybe we allow them to park up in the sixteen parking spots that have been taken away. And I understand sixteen is a lot. But if we allow them to park from 7 to noon, I think we might, it'd be a win-win, I would think. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Springer?
I just have to comment. One thing is that the way the traffic, it starts slow, you know? So you know how it is on Saturday morning, and then it kind of builds, so it's busier at the time. The traffic is, is more as we reach, as it reaches noon. But there are families that go to the Farmer's Market on bicycles, you know, little kids on bicycles. And if there were a crosswalk and if there were slow signs, it would, the cars aren't, I mean, there are kids, there are people, and it would not occur to them to slow down. So it might be an opportunity to give the priority to pedestrians. And yes, they are, they are crosswalking the way it is set up now. And if something could be done for mid-block crossing, they would appreciate that. And I have to say that sometimes people cross mid-block during the week, you know, if they're going straight across the street. I don't see it often, but then I'm not there often during the week. But it might be, maybe to change our thinking a little bit.
Any other council member wish to weigh in? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to STAFF for a really thorough presentation. I agree, looking at the numbers, if there is ample parking in the area, but I completely agree with everything the vice mayor said. I think it would be prudent to look at, you know, perhaps opening those spaces back up. Mr. Mayor, I mean, just a point of order, I guess this would need to come back at the end of the meeting, right? If somebody wanted to add an agenda item to revisit that code?
Actually, no, because this is the item in front of us. We can, consensus on this one item only, we can give direction to STAFF to move forward, so this doesn't have to come back as an agenda item, because we're allowed to discuss this topic only. So if you want to make, if the vice mayor and you would like to lead us through this and make a motion for that sixteen spaces, by all means, we can do it.
It's the vice mayor's idea, I'll defer to him.
There's no further discussion. I vote that we go ahead and implement the parking restrictions, take those up on Saturday mornings from 7 to noon, and allow, obviously, people that attend the parking, the Farmer's Market.
So to help out, we're basically, on this motion, Vice Mayor is to amend the, to bring back, okay, to bring back an ordinance relating to electrical vehicle charging for Saturday, to allow people to park, actually, to park in the lot in the morning on Saturdays between a certain time. Seven to 12, I want to make sure the motion's correct. You okay with that, Vice Mayor?
The words ran out of my mouth, Mr. Mayor.
Dude, we think alike, fire and police.
There you go.
Councilmember Schultz, you're second, you know?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Councilmember Anthony?
I would just like to ask the vice mayor if we could amend to 1 p.m. I know we go, the Farmer's Market goes till 12:30, and if you're a late straggler, or if you're closing up your business, you may not get there till 12:45, 1 o'clock.
Sure, that'd be fine.
Madam City Clerk? Nick Schultz, you are the second, you're okay with amending that?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Springer, I know this was very dear to your heart. Anything else you want to add before we call for the roll?
Just that if, if you all would consider giving no-jaywalking signs a chance, because there are people who work there in those small office buildings, and there are people who eat at Another Broken Egg, and just to try that so that the people who work there don't have to park around in the courthouse lot. Because that's what was going to happen at first, and then they were surprised when those signs went up, instead of the warning tickets for jaywalking. And it caught everybody by surprise, and we could give it pride.
On that one, on that one there, Councilmember Springer, I see two police officers here, the watch commander, lieutenant here, and a supervisor. If I may call them to give your thoughts about the jaywalking and what we should be thinking about as council before we take the vote. Thank you for being here, Lieutenant.
Yes. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you. Just to touch on this topic, we went out there based on a complaint of the jaywalking, specifically for people, customers of the Farmer's Market. One of our biggest concerns is, obviously, I'm the lieutenant of the Traffic Bureau, Lieutenant John Fromer I brought with me, my motor sergeant, Sergeant Fletcher Stone. One of our biggest items of concern are vehicles versus pedestrian collisions because of the potential injuries or even death that could be caused from those. We're trying to reduce those, just to give you an average, we can have anywhere on average of just above 60 pedestrian collisions a year. Last year, due to COVID conditions and lessened traffic, we only had 35 for the year, which is a great number, but we even want to reduce that number. The cluster that we can find, or any trend you can find in the city, is typically downtown because you're talking about bringing traffic and a large group of pedestrians together. So we know in the morning breakfast, lunch, and dinnertime hours, that's when we see most of the pedestrians on the street, crossing the street. But definitely with the Farmer's Market, we specifically went to monitor for two weeks before we made any suggestions. And the problem was, even with police officers, more than one on motorcycle, motorcycle officers, and we all know motorcops, their only job is traffic, so you don't want to commit violations in front of them, but people would park and cross mid-block right in front of the officers, even while they were giving verbal warnings to other pedestrians who were doing the same violation. So with that short of a block, if we were talking about a larger city block, which we do have within the city, I would be behind Councilmember Springer on a suggestion or a study on the value of how many people are actually crossing the street right there, and should we put a mid-block crosswalk? However, that block is pretty small, so it's not too inconvenient to walk to Glen Oaks or Third Street to cross the street. So our biggest concerns are the safety issue. Vehicles these days trying to pay attention with all the devices they have in their car and everything, you can't trust that people are paying attention. So I would prefer not, I would prefer to keep that parking restriction because what we saw, once we put this, we made a suggestion of this, we worked with CDD and Public Works on this. When we actually put the signs up, we saw a drastic decrease in the jaywalking violations, which of course make us happy because people are safer when they're using the crosswalks. So our suggestion would be to keep it that way, but we would always defer to you.
Thank you, thank you for being here, Lieutenant, and making yourself available with your motor sergeant.
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Springer? Any further thoughts on this one here? I, obviously, being a policeman, I would have to agree, the vehicle code says there's two controlled intersections there, and you know what? People should follow the rules, and I think it's a short block. And, you know, I think the compromise here is we're giving, you know, through the vice mayor's motion, they're getting their 16 spots back on Saturday, but I don't want to see anybody get hurt. And let's face it, we have a hard time controlling speeders, and I don't want to have an individual that, hey, I'm gonna take a shortcut and just run across the street. I would say I'm gonna follow the suggestion of the lieutenant. So if there's no further on this discussion, I'd like to close this agenda item, move forward, and let's call for the vote. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have Vice Mayor, I believe it's Vice Mayor Tlomontas that made the motion?
Yes.
And Councilmember Schultz, correct? Okay, so Vice Mayor Tlomontas?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes, and Madam City Clerk, you noted the change, and it was approved by the maker and the second. Great. Now we're gonna go back to the consent calendar and go to the second item that Councilmember Springer has questions and comments about. Councilmember Springer, you take the lead on item number two on the consent calendar.
I'm all for outdoor dining. I think it's been a huge success, and I support our restaurants. But I would like to include some language in there that, you know, if it does approach on, you know, a neighboring house across the alley or whatever, that we should be considerate of that and move the outdoor dining to the front sidewalk, or consider the possibility of doing parklets in other locations, give the restaurant the choice. Do you want the parking in front of the restaurant? Or would you like a little parklet so you can put tables? But the caller was supportive of restaurants, and I think we all are. But now that they can, resident, patrons can go back and sign, it's not such a huge issue, but I think people love to eat outside. So if we could work with the residents and the restaurants on that, change the language a little bit, I think that would be a good thing.
Okay, another council member would like to weigh in? Councilmember Anthony?
I just want to ask, under our current, the ordinance that we're going to, that we would extend, the parklets are only allowed in the downtown area, is that correct?
So this doesn't, the parklets are a separate, if I may?
Yes, please, Madam City Attorney.
Jumped right in.
That's okay, I'm used to it.
The parklets are, right now are in the downtown area, and I would rather defer to other people into whether we're expanding it. But that's, the parking, dining, the outdoor on sidewalks is, throughout the whole city, you can do that.
Well, outdoor dining on the sidewalks, yeah, but not.
And we expanded. Sorry, I didn't mean to, I'm sorry. The, we also expanded the program so it didn't have to be, you know, expanded outdoor dining on sidewalks?
But if like a restaurant in Magnolia Park wanted to extend into the street, do we allow for that at all?
I think Mr. Prescott's gonna get up and answer that.
I believe it's only in downtown Burbank, anywhere else in the city.
Yeah, I haven't seen it anywhere outside of downtown.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. As Ms. Albano was explaining, there are parklets in downtown Burbank. I'm not aware of any else that we've approved. We have sidewalk dining in the city right-of-way as well. And then the ordinance that's being considered tonight is for parking and, excuse me, outdoor dining in private parking lots. So that allows a restaurant that perhaps doesn't have the ability to use a sidewalk, or it's a strip mall that doesn't, that doesn't front on the sidewalk, they're able to use their parking area out in front of their business or behind their business. I would like, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please, please.
To have the opportunity to reach out to the resident who called and see specifically where this is?
Okay.
The restaurant is, and try to resolve that. And encourage the restaurant to perhaps reorient the dining or use the sidewalk as, if possible, because we're not even sure if the sidewalk is available.
Okay, if I can trouble you, just in a white paper, just no discussion, but inform the council what came out of the community members' call and what was the outcome? Can we shoot you an email? Yeah. Okay. I meant white paper. All this modern technology. Doggone it, write it out for me.
Okay, okay.
Yes, please, an email just to inform the council that, you know, if there has to be an amendment, then we can bring it back as an agenda item for council to consider.
We can do that.
Councilmember Springer?
If the majority of the council.
Councilmember Springer?
Right, so I have a question. So we are going to consider, like, the intrusion, if there is an intrusion. It could be that most of the time there is not, but, you know, I'm thinking of some of these on, how will we handle that moving forward if a resident objects?
Mr. Prescott?
We, we haven't heard any objections, except for tonight. There was an issue with parking, I think, in one neighborhood. I think, in one neighborhood. But if we do hear a complaint, we respond as we typically do, we engage the business and try to resolve the problem. Our economic development team is good at that, our code enforcement people are really good at that as well.
So that can be written to this?
Well, we're not writing anything, Councilmember Springer, but we're getting a feedback report from staff of what happened with this one incident, and then we can decide for a future agenda item to further discuss this, if we want to have the staff come back to amend the current ordinance, based on our input, has, let this situation, let them deal with it and see what their suggestions are, and then we can move forward, but at least we'll have the information of who, what, when, where, and why, and then we can bring this back. Are you okay with it, ma'am?
Yes.
Other councilmembers wish to weigh in on this? If not, I'll call for the vote. Seeing none, councilmembers, Madam City Clerk, please call the agenda item for this number two on the consent calendar.
You're gonna have a motion?
Would anybody like to make the motion on this agenda item?
I can move your, I can move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have, Nick, and second, Councilmember Springer, you have a question?
No, I'll second it.
Oh, Vice Mayor beat you to it, sorry.
Fine.
Okay, can you read it for the record, Madam City Clerk, what we're voting on, just to make sure everybody knows what we're voting on this evening?
So this is for item number two under consent calendar, which is consideration and adoption of an uncutified urgency ordinance temporary allowing restaurants to continue use of their private parking lots for outdoor dining. That was the item that was pulled earlier. So I have a motion from Councilmember Schultz and second it by Councilmember Springer, and we're ready to take a vote.
And so we're clear.
Oh, hang on, I see a hand up, Vice Mayor has his hand up. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I believe I seconded that motion.
Okay, yes, Councilmember Schultz was the author of the motion.
Madam City Clerk, did you get that?
Thank you, sir, yes, I did.
Can we please be clear that the matter is in consideration, it's to adopt an urgency ordinance?
Correct.
That does those things, as well as waiving parking requirements, just so we're clear.
Which requires a four-fifth from the council.
I'm just, Ms. Mullins gave the subject, I just want to make sure we're doing the recommendation.
Recommendation.
Thank you.
I'm happy to read it if everybody's, okay, so we all in agreement that was the title of item number two.
Why don't you read it, let's officially read it in the record, so we all know exactly.
So the recommendation is to adopt an uncutify urgency ordinance of the council of the city of Burbank, temporary allowing restaurants to continue to use their private parking lots for outdoor dining and waiving parking requirements. It requires the four-fifth vote. So with that, I'm ready to take the vote.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talamontis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
And Mayor Frutos?
Yes, motion carries, moves forward, all five. This is a time for brief council comments, including reporting out on council assignments. Who would like to go first this evening? Okay, Councilmember Anthony, got the Colgate smile. Go for it.
I attended the, on Friday, June 11th, I was at the Burbank YMCA Social Impact Center ribbon cutting, which was amazing, they have this whole setup there, Councilmember Springer and Councilmember Schultz were also there with me, but I wanted to give a little shout out specifically on, to an event on Saturday, a local group of black-owned businesses put together a Juneteenth celebration in Magnolia Park. It was absolutely incredible, they had music, festivities, games, they had an art installation, it was just a wonderful celebration. For the viewers who don't know, Juneteenth is the celebration of June 19th, when the final word of the Emancipation Proclamation reached the furthest west and south city of Galveston, Texas, and the very last, you know, people who, of the enslaved South, were told that they were finally free. It's, it's an incredible celebration, it's been going on for, you know, over a hundred years, and we had our first celebration here in Burbank, it was incredible to behold.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Anthony. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Wednesday, June 9th, I joined, I believe, the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Springer at a town hall meeting with Supervisor Barker that was hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, I'll let them report back on anything of note there. I just wanted to give a shout out, the following night, I had an opportunity to ride along with Sergeant Verzi with Burbank PD, and I gotta say that they run a really top-notch operation there, and, you know, just riding with them one evening really lets you know how safe we are as a community, so thank you to Sergeant Verzi and everyone else at BPD. Friday, June 11th, I joined Councilmembers Anthony and Springer at the Social Impact Center, he already covered that. On Monday, June 14th, I believe we were all at the Rose River Memorial Art Installation, I just wanted to say a special thank you to our Cultural Arts Commission, Parks and Rec, and everyone else who played a role in that. On Wednesday, the 16th, I believe I was with you, Mr. Mayor, at our Police Commission meeting, there was some discussion about the independence of the commission as it relates to Burbank Police Department, and there may or may not be some recommendations, that might be coming back as a discussion point for us moving forward, but they were talking about things like the letterhead and how they receive communications from the public. The following day, on the 17th, I went to two events, I was lucky to be invited to a new program they're starting at the Social Impact Center called Burbank Listens. The idea is that they're inviting elected officials in Burbank to come and meet with the youth who are taking advantage of the center, and I believe that Rob Rodriguez will be reaching out to all of you to schedule a time for you to come in and do that, and I thought it was just terrific. Also went to the Chamber reopen House Mixer, saw several of you there, it's great to see the chamber reopen. Almost done. Monday, the 21st, I again, with you, Mr. Mayor, participated in the Sustainable Burbank Commission meeting, I believe there'll be several correspondents coming forward on some items that we'll be talking about, including the Intermountain Power Plant, there was also some discussion of reorganization of internal commission operations. And then today, just wanted to mention, I had a chance to meet with the California Retailers Association about opportunities to partner and support their members here in Burbank, and finally had a chance to tour the construction of the new Providence St. Joseph Medical Center Emergency Department, and really happy to report that it appears that's gonna come online next summer, and that is going to be a tremendous service to our community, including some behavioral health units, which I think will be a wonderful addition to the expansion of the mental health evaluation team that we've been talking about through it. So that's everything I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. Councilmember Springer?
I attended an Economic Recovery Task Force with the Vice Mayor, with our labor unions, Parks and Rec Board, and the Social Impact Center is, I look, that's a very nice asset for our city. I attended the P-Flag meeting and the Rose River Memorial Art Installation Ceremony with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Springer. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, let's see here, I had a meeting with a couple of board members from the Burbank Housing Corporation, and it was mentioned already, Chamber of Commerce had a town hall meeting with Supervisor Barker, and I attended the, I had a tour, I didn't go to the event itself on Friday at the YMCA, I had a tour earlier that week of the Impact Center, it's awesome, and it's great, it's gonna be a great, great help for our youth. And also the Rose River Memorial Art Installation, that was great to see, that being the public really participated with all those, Burbank Tournament of Roses was a big participant in coming up with those roses that were installed. And then, was it yesterday, Mr. Mayor, we attended the Finney's Brew House ribbon cutting, you and I? Other than that, that's all, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and thank you for filling in when I can't make it, thank you. Okay, going back to Wednesday, June 9th, I attended the Board of Library Trustees, nothing really to report out to the council. On Sunday, June 13th, I met our Congressman for coffee, and I updated him on our traffic issues, development, and public transportation within our city. On Monday, the 14th, I represented the council, speaking at the PEO Women's Group of Burbank Chapter via Zoom. I also attended the Rose River Memorial Art Installation, I encourage all the community members, come by City Hall and look at all the beautiful roses that are at the steps of City Hall. I also signed letters on, as the mayor of the city of Burbank, to Congressman Sherman and Congressman Schiff, supporting their bill of Drinking Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Act of 2021. I attended the retirement party for a forty-year employee, Norma is retiring from the Police Department and from members of the community, she was the person behind the scenes dealing with all the concerns regarding setting up productions within our city, but she'll definitely be missed. I attended the Police Commission meeting with, Councilmember Schultz had reported out. I also telephonically spoke with Jason from Supervisor Catherine Barker's office to give him an update of what's going on in our city, and I wanted to also report out that back on Thursday, Sunday, the 17th, I attended a dinner regarding the retirement, it was a family get-together for Bruce Redman, who was an icon at the utility, he is now in retirement. I also attended the Chamber reopen House Mixer, I, on Monday, the 21st of June, I attended the ribbon cutting for Finney's Craft House and Kitchen, I also attended the Burbank Sustainable Commission meeting later on that evening, and today I went to go honor the retirement of Gwen Endermille from our Parks Department, I believe she's retiring after thirty years of service to our city. I want to remind the public that we are having a Fourth of July spectacular fireworks show, Mr. City Manager, I believe it's nine o'clock in the evening, so folks, have your family and friends over your house, bring out those lawn chairs, and at nine o'clock, we will have a firework show in our city. I also like to take this opportunity to thank our Chief of Police, as by the time we come back to our next council meeting, our current chief, Scott Lachas, will be well into his second week of retirement and not having to be at city council meeting or watching city council from the comfort of his office. Some of the highlights that I was kinda thinking of what the chief did, back, back when he interviewed for the interim chief, I was the chairman of the Police Commission, the city manager at the time was Mike Flad, and he actually did extremely well on his interview, but what kinda stood out to me in his interview is that the chief had a plan of what he was going to do, where most chiefs talked about just being an interim, he looked at solving the problem and talked a lot about his background and experience, and most important was being sensitive to the issues and the uniqueness of the community and moving the police department forward. So one of the things that he did that I was so impressed with is for our deaf community, he created a deaf academy, so they were included in the academies of community contact. I was so proud of his leadership through the department that we received an award from the LA County Health Department regarding our mental evaluation team, we became the model, we beat LAPD, and they had a pretty good, we call it smart team over there, so that was excellent, and he had a rough time coming to Burbank, he really was a change agent, and it was a time when he took over and the complaints dealing with the portals incident, and he had to, you know, do administrative discipline, and basically he was not well-liked from within the organization, but his true commitment to the profession of law enforcement and public safety came out. Here in Burbank, we never used to have coffee with the cop, a cop, and he was doing it usually quarterly and moving to different parts of the city, to even the last one was ice cream with a cop, and, you know, the chief was very innovative, and, you know, he got his command officers to be involved with the various nonprofits to make sure that the department through his leadership was really interwoven in the community to serve its people, and, you know, he was always open to any council member to talk about anything and everything within the city, and I just wanted to thank the chief for his eleven years of service to our community, and, you know, he takes care of his elder mom, and he's very committed, and I don't really remember him taking a long vacation, so he's definitely earning his retirement, and I would, I would be short by not also acknowledging the chief, that many times, the chief would sit in, when both our city manager and assistant city manager were in conferences, the chief would step in as the acting city manager, and I remember I attended one of his management meetings, and he always looked at, so when we got a complaint of something with the park, and it really did not involve a police problem, the chief was the type of leader that would say, no, 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 this is a team effort across our city, if the department can help out, great, but he was always part of the think tank in trying to find better solutions to the problems to help out the residents. So I wanted to thank the chief for his eleven years of service in protecting our residents and serving our community, it's a well-deserved retirement, and I'm gonna miss the chief, so thank you so much, chief, on your commitment to the people of Burbank. We will now move to introduction of additional agenda items, do members of the council have any items to introduce this evening? Councilmember Schultz, followed by Councilmember Springer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring back for a discussion item, an update on the single-use plastic ban, and as part of that discussion of a potential skip-the-stuff ordinance.
Okay, got that, Mr. City Manager, as I did, Councilmember Schultz?
That's it.
Councilmember Springer?
Um, yes, may we please have, like, a forum on the existing and pending housing bills, for example, SB 9, SB 10, AB 13, 2022, and 35, as SB 35, as it impacts other parts of the city. I know that Mr. Prescott is planning a community meeting for Pickwick, but there have been some requests, well, how does it affect other parts of our city? And Ms. Cunningham noted, you know, five issues, I'm just, sorry, I just didn't write fast enough, but is it by right in other parts of our city? So that is, and if we could include our assembly member and our senator in that also, and they can help us understand.
Councilmember Springer, can I ask you to just give me the Reader's Digest of your agenda items, so we know exactly what you're requesting, please, just the Reader's Digest?
A special council meeting on existing and pending housing bills.
You got that, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, we'd bring back as a first step to, for the whole council to decide how to move forward, best to move forward with that.
Is it a study session you're requesting, or a one-step, two-step, how the city moves forward?
An informative, an informative meeting, because I get a lot of questions.
We'll come back as a first step.
Okay, then we'll come back as a one-step, two-step process. Thank you. Any other, guess, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, a discussion on the introduction of a primary in our election.
Got it.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Okay, any other councilmembers have any agenda items? Mr. Scott, I mean, Mr. Scott, sorry, 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 Mr. Hess, it's that blue suit of yours. Mr. Hess, I think I'm asking the same thing, but I'm asking for a study session on the Pickwick property, as far as it's a commercial use, doesn't that, and that's it, that's not a discussion. Thank you, sir. Seeing nothing else, councilmembers, we will now adjourn in memory of Emilio U. Rusti?
Rios.
Thank you, to Tuesday, July 13th, for a regular meeting through an online meeting process, the public may view the meeting online or on television, and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways, by leaving an e-comment on the city's webpage, Burbank, CA- burbankca.gov/ecomments, by emailing the city council directly at citycouncil@burbankca.gov, by calling in directly to the council meeting at 818-238-3335. Members of the community, please have a safe Fourth of July, we do have a firework show this year at 9:00 PM. Thank you, council members, thank you, staff, Madam City Clerk, members of the public, good night, everybody, happy Fourth of July.